Well, good evening, everyone. My name's Jack Balindorf, Chairman of the U-46 Board. It's Monday, December 16th. Call the meeting to order at 6:40. I'd like to go around the table. Amy will start at your end and introduce ourselves and just what your title is or what you're representing.
I'm Amy Cole, I'm the Executive Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment for Shittan County.
Rob Reardon, Principal Essex High School.
Ryan McLaren, Board Member from Essex Town.
I'm Brian Donio, a Board Member from Essex Junction.
Judith De Navis, Superintendent.
Jack Balindorf, Board Member from Essex Junction and Chairman.
Bob Barrier, Board Member.
Aaron Knox, Board Member from Essex Junction.
Gary Baker, Board Member, Essex Town.
Bob Travers, Director, Center for Technology Essex.
Thank you. We have many visitors in our audience tonight, but I believe that all our visitors are here to talk about either the grading scale, our curriculum instruction and assessment, or science kneecap topics. If you're not, is there anyone here who doesn't want to discuss one of those topics? Good. Then we'll move on then. Normally, I would read our mission statements for both Essex High School and our Center for Technology Essex, but I'm going to waive reading those tonight to try and keep us back on track for schedule. We got a little bit of a late start. So, first topic for this evening is our Essex High School grading scale. And Mr. Reardon, I think, is this a topic that you're going to lead us through for this evening?
I think we'll kick it off.
Okay.
So, last month, we had a visitor to be heard, and we had a letter that was submitted in terms of the grading scale moving from the current 70 to 100 in regards to the scale that has been in place for quite a period of time to 60 to 100. And the move, as I've indicated in the Org notes, was most recently proposed in March of 2009 when Michelle Rath, Director of School Counseling, and Essex High School teacher Tim Root brought the proposal before the school council, which at that time was the decision-making entity involving administration, teachers, and students. And the proposal, to be succinct, because I'm not sure if folks want to have additional input, was proposed for many of the reasons given from last month. Long story short, there was a significant amount of conversation, and at the time, the decision-making was consensus by all. Consensus was not reached, and therefore, the proposal was defeated. And it has not been revisited formally since 2009. And Lori Thompson, current Essex High School counselor, if you recall, last semester, she was acting as our Director of Counseling. She was a part of one of the grading committees that was in existence with Tom Gibson for many years as well. So she is available tonight for input and question and answers. I don't know if you want me to go any further, or if we want to have any opportunity for input or questions.
Yeah, we'd just like to ask a dumb question here. Why is consensus consensus? Is there a better way to come to a decision on this?
That was the old model. It is no longer in existence.
Okay. Good. So now we're moving ahead on this?
Yes.
Good.
What I proposed in my report, for those of you that haven't read the report, is to take the proposal as written and move it through our decision-making model that we have currently in place, which I'd be happy to pass out a copy to each board member as to how that decision-making model works now.
It seems to bring us in line with schools and districts and college requirements. I understand why the old system was left. It serves as a challenge to students, but I think if we're going to have a level playing field for our students at the college level, then we need to reevaluate this.
I guess one of the things I could do is, two of the reasons mentioned last month that I could read what was presented in 2009 was the Essex High School students not being on a level playing field with our peers in the county and perhaps beyond in regards to, I think the example, one of the examples given was National Merit Scholarship. And another was an everyday occurrence, if you will, in terms of obtaining discounted rates in automobile insurance, in terms of good student policy, in regards to how the conversion from the numerical scale to the letter scale works for Essex students as compared to those students that are in the 60 to 100 schedule, as two examples given. In terms of the proposal by Mr. Root and Mrs. Rath, their rationale at the time, once again, this was March of 2009, to stimulate a faculty-wide discussion, it did do that, to increase EHS academic expectations and standards, to create more distinct separation between students relative to their overall GPA, to simplify guidance department efforts in communicating with post-secondary institutions and other schools, and finally, to make our grading system more easily understood by students and parents. So those were the main bulleted points that were given in 2009. Lori, was there anything I missed on that?
No, I would just like to say that that was a culmination of three years of working with a committee of faculty, which is called the Grading Committee. And that proposal was the culmination of the work for that committee.
Yep. And about how many people comprise the committee ballpark?
Probably six or seven.
Okay.
From all different disciplines.
Sure, yes.
Oh, go ahead. I have two questions, but go ahead.
I'm curious to your question.
So I have my two questions. One question is, what's changed from 2009 to 2013 that it was, we didn't reach consensus and the proposal was defeated then?
Correct.
What makes us think it would be any different today?
Well, the only thing I could say in that is we haven't had the ability to have the discussion in earnest since 2009, but I can tell you that it would not be a decision that would be reached on a consensus model. So the outcome, once again, going through the decision-making model that we have, is not a consensus-based approach, so...
So it wouldn't be consensus, would it be majority vote, or how would you envision the decision process coming forward this time, different than what happened back in 2009?
How would I envision this without having the ability to have conversations?
Right.
Yet I would see this as a situation where we would want to have a majority vote of stakeholders.
Right.
Which would make more sense to me.
And the second question I have is, again, we're having this conversation December of 2013, right?
Correct.
The earliest, if we were to take this forward, the earliest it would affect a grading scale change would be next academic year?
Yes.
Okay, so, again, understanding from the guidance departments and communicating with post-secondary, much of that work is already complete for...
Correct.
So it wouldn't affect us this year, but the vision would be it would be implemented for next year?
Fall of 2014.
Fall of 2014, that act. Okay. Those were my two questions. Thank you. Brian?
Those are excellent questions.
For any of this to be retroactive then? I was just someone who was a junior, does that, do they have two different grading scales on their transcript? If this were to get passed? So we're going to see like a huge spiking in grades, probably, over the last two years? We have to be careful not to say that that's... But if you're lowering the scale, I mean, you're going to have more As, you're going to have more Bs, right? Because it's going to be mathematically easier.
I believe we work on a numerical basis that then has a school profile that reports out...
Correct.
...to a GPA, so we're...
I'm going to speak for Mr. Tom Gibson, who's not here. I feel free to speak for him, because I had a phone conversation with him December 2nd. He did, in his time here, a significant amount of research with schools throughout Shittan County. At the time, Burlington High School, Rice High School, and Essex used the 70 to 100 scale. The other schools were 60 to 100. And he didn't have the numbers, obviously, at his disposal anymore because he's retired, but he did not find a significant disparity between the number of As, Bs, Cs, et cetera, between the schools that had 70 to 100, 60 to 100. There was some, but not significant, in terms of his opinion. He wasn't, he didn't see what he might have thought he was going to see when he did the work, and he put a lot of time, as Lori mentioned, there was a, this was a multi-year endeavor that was undertaken with a lot of work done behind the scenes, both by Tom and then it's Michelle, and Michelle came on board. So, but that was one of the things Tom mentioned when I was chatting with him December 2nd.
How long do you envision it would take to move closer to proficiency-based grading? Like, are we changing now for two years, and then we'll be doing something completely different in two years?
Ryan asked a good question. December 7th, I attended with Colleen Burner and Ukari Doherty, a two-and-a-half-hour Saturday morning session at ADL that Lori Singer hosted, in regards to proficiency-based reporting, learning and reporting. And for the board's interest, both EMS and ADL, starting next fall, are moving to a proficiency-based system of reporting. And part of belonging to the New England Secondary School Consortium, one of the two main points of emphasis are multiple flexible pathways and proficiency-based reporting. So we have a very small team, very small, that's doing a PDI, starting this year, at Essex High School for proficiency-based reporting. The question you ask, I would say, conservatively, to do the work, because there's a tremendous amount of work that would have to be done, and it's not like we are not doing a lot already with Common Core and Next Gen Science Standards, the advisory system, and some of the other pieces of work that we're doing, I would see this as at least a three-year move. So, just recognize that this is a, and there are, to rewind a little bit, December 7th, there were middle schools and high schools represented, and a lot of schools were at the very beginning stages, if you will, moving forward. I think CBU has got a year's worth of work underneath them, but other than that, most high schools in Vermont that were represented at that meeting were just thinking about it, or it just barely gotten underway. Many schools in the consortium, Maine comes to mind, are way ahead, aligning with Common Core, so, with proficiency-based reporting. So we will have the opportunity to get information from our peers throughout New England to help inform us as we look to move forward on this. So, but, it's a good question, and I would say at least three years, maybe four. But that's, I would be comfortable in saying that at least.
Any other questions for Rob?
Just curious to know what the disadvantages...
Please stand up and state your name, so we all know who you are.
I'm Michelle.
Yes.
I was just curious to know what the disadvantages were to changing the grading scale, that people, if there was no consensus, why that happened? What's the problem?
I don't have that sheet, but I do, I remember reading out of the materials that there were, there were many that felt that that would be lowering standards, academic standards. Although there was another point made, although it's counterintuitive, that you would actually be raising standards. However, there were differing opinions. I could, I could get you some information on that.
I was just curious, if there was one overriding thing?
That was probably the main theme, I think, the perception. Lori, would you agree with that? Thank you.
So, any other questions from the board here on this?
I'm just curious, it's sometimes, and as I've looked into this issue, sometimes there's a nuance of a 60 to 100, and sometimes there's a 65 to 100. What was the original proposal?
60.
Okay.
And in talking to some members of our staff since last month's meeting, I mentioned 65, and the response pretty generally was, don't bother. If you're going to just go from 70 to 65, don't, because that would not bring us in line with the county. It still would make us different. Yep.
Did you see that Rice and Burlington had...
That was back when Mr. Gibson was looking at this. Since then, they have...
Have they switched?
Burlington has. Lori, do you know about?
Rice is still 70.
Rice is still 70. I knew Burlington had gone to 60. I wasn't sure about Rice. Rice is 70. Okay.
And just out of curiosity, CBU is doing...
60.
Okay.
So this is not, this topic is not an action for the board this evening. This is information only that you're sharing with us. So, Principal Reardon, is your intention then to take this forward to your, through your decision process, through your, you know, leadership team, and make a recommendation back to the board? Or how do we see, what do you need from the board on this?
Just the green light to go ahead. We will move this forward based upon input received.
Okay.
What I'm passing around is the summary from the 1989 and the decision-making model that we have in place now.
So, so, board members, I mean, again, this is not an action item for tonight, but is there any reason that any of us would foresee not giving Principal Reardon, you know, the opportunity to go forward and explore this? Because I think it makes, I think we've got everything to gain and nothing to lose at this point, to go forward and through your leadership team and see where this, you know, what the inputs are.
Yeah. When the conversation starts, if there's an opportunity for CTE away, and that would be great, since we reflect your policy, and we have direct relationships with all those sending schools who have a different scale. So it actually improves the students' experience back at their sending schools, instead of having two different scales on a report card.
Right. Good point, good point. Bob?
Be happy to include you.
I think Charlie Brady would be very happy to be invited to that meeting.
Okay. I think you would too.
So I take that to mean, Director Travers, Principal Reardon, you've got the green light to go forward and...
So noted.
And do this.
Okay.
I also believe I can speak for the board on this topic, that this is an item of interest to us, and we will be asking how things are progressing, and keep us posted on where this settles out.
Okay. Yeah, I think the one thing I would say is I'd love to, when we get to this make-decision point, I'd love to, for the board to be included in that. I don't want it just, I don't want it just happen. You know what I mean?
You'll get updates.
Yes.
Yeah. No surprises.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Rob.
You're welcome.
Amy, at this point, for you and...
Thanks, Lori.
...your representatives to talk about our curriculum assessment and professional development topic.
Yes.
Okay.
I have three drafts, drafts of the most recent program of studies, and the only reason I brought three was because it's running out the door and the copy room didn't like me very much. But this will be finalized this week, and will be on the website. I just didn't know if anybody had ever really had an opportunity to take a peek at this. It represents a body of work that the CCA, all of the teacher leaders have been engaged in over the last, well, bazillion years, but my work in the last three years. What I did is I put together a PowerPoint, and we have some folks here who can add to the conversation, but I really only constructed this PowerPoint as a way to have a conversation. So, you know, I'm the one who stands in front of you with too much information, and I say it too quickly, so I want to make sure that this is just structured in a way to give you some updates. You received a written update from your curriculum content leaders and from your literacy coach. We intentionally kept off updates around the academies because we felt like that was a much bigger conversation, and we looked at your agenda tonight and realized that would probably take you until midnight. So, I would encourage us to think about, and we talked, Leanne and Josh and Rob and I talked the other day about maybe scheduling some time in the spring, if you were interested in hearing some updates around the academies. So, this PowerPoint, again, is just intended, once I find it. And we have, I know your next item is the science results, so I'll be a little bit light on the science piece here. Kelly Hill is coming in to help present the science kneecap results, as well as some other data points.
Good.
I wonder while I'm doing this, if we could introduce the people who are sitting here, so that when they pipe in, you know who they're talking about? Justin, you want to start?
Sure. Justin Norris, I am the Math Curriculum Content Leader.
Yeah, Hemingway, I'm the Business, JRTC, Driver's Ed, and Practical Arts Curriculum Leader.
Leanne Smith, I'm the STEM Academy Leader.
And I'm Erica Leclerc, your High School Literacy Coach.
And as I said, Kelly Hill will be coming in. So these are just some focus areas, and I say that because you've seen your action plan. It's probably the smallest font, largest action plan of a high school nearby us. And so I don't mean to intentionally leave anything out or underrepresent some of the good work that's being done, so, for example, around the examination of global best practices or advisory. I really wanted to just say focus on curriculum instruction and assessment. So for tonight, I'm just going to talk with you briefly about where we are in terms of our implementation of the Math Common Core State Standards, literacy Common Core State Standards. We have a school-wide focus on writing this year. A few words about Next Generation Science Standards, and then Kelly's going to go a little bit more deeply when she gets here. Our work around curriculum mapping, some work that we're doing in trying to understand our new state assessment, and we're field testing our new state assessment this spring, so I'll fill in a little bit about that. And then we have some other focus areas, just some little ones, informed by legislation that are, that touch all of these pieces, and we're planning for it. So I'll go into that in a little bit more detail in a minute. In terms of implementation of Math Common Core, you have a much longer description from Justin in terms of the detailed work that they're doing in your math section, but I wanted to highlight some in particular. The math folks have been to a tremendous amount of training in the last two years. We've had some regional training, some folks have gone off to some national conferences. They've done a substantial amount of curriculum work during some summer days, and they've done additional, built-in sort of late afternoon meetings in the last two years in order to accomplish some of this work. There's been an alignment or a revision of the Algebra I curriculum and the geometry curriculum. They've been most recently looking at, as we look at our Common Core standards against what our standards are embedded in our current classes, there's an area that Justin spoke to in his piece around, it's a bit of a gap in terms of the amount of standards that were required now for probability statistics, so we're really trying to problem solve how we're going to solve that. Is it a course? Is it embedded? Does it fit in a course? They've been doing some work in examining resources. We came out of the gate with the assumption, maybe, that we'd be looking at some new text materials, and they've kind of backed off that right now and started to collect some... One of the advantages of 44 states adopting Common Core State Standards is there's a lot out there now, and there's a lot of electronic free resources. So they've been doing a nice job of trying to collect those resources. There's some technology implications, and you'll see that as a theme throughout this in terms of literacy Common Core, Next Gen, and the implementation of Sback. And Justin's done a nice job of reaching out to our feeder schools to really keep an eye on what is this middle school, high school transition going to look like? Because as you can imagine, this is a set of new K-12 math standards. Not all of these students will come in with the standards, ready to learn the standards that are assigned at the high school. So it's really going to take some thoughtful transition. Most recently, he attended a meeting looking at the Algebra seminar format and sort of teasing out what their plan is in terms of that. Justin, did you want to add anything, or embellish upon anything, or ask Justin any questions?
You guys feel free to ask questions. I don't think I have. I think you did a nice job of summarizing. It's been quite a bit of work the last few years, and I see that continuing, but the teachers have done a nice job of making this transition. This year is our first year. All of our Algebra I courses are aligned to a Common Core curriculum, and our goal is for next fall, is our geometry curriculum will, students will then be taking a geometry Common Core class. And I met, like Leanne, like Amy said, was last week with EMS and ADL teachers, and the goal is whether or not you're taking an Algebra I course with us here at the high school, or at EMS, or at ADL, it's a similar experience, because we're getting all those kids in our geometry courses next year. So hopefully, it's a similar algebra experience for all of them, no matter which of the three places you're taking.
And you mentioned this morning, you shared the curriculum maps and the common midterm exams with them, so they had a sense of what those look like?
Right, yeah. We're still, we've been doing some quarter and service days the last few weeks after school, and we were creating a common set of questions for our Algebra I midterms. And so, I haven't yet, but I will be sharing that with the middle schools, and we've already shared the curriculum map, so they know what our Algebra I curriculum is going to be looking like.
One of the things I should have included here in the bullet, you know, the Common Core standards, they don't just represent content, but there's some pretty significant instructional shifts, and they're called the Math Standards of Practice. I don't know if you want to talk about some of the work that you've done. You guys have been to a lot of professional development around this.
Yeah, and one of the big things is, one of the changes is this idea of modeling. So, you know, being able to look at a problem and being able to come up with a solution that's going to describe that, and that takes a lot of time. And it's a longer, more in-depth look in investigating in mathematics, and a lot of the change is, you know, you're kind of started a unit by giving a problem and having the kids inquire about how do we go about solving that problem? And so that's kind of an instructional shift that K-12, we're trying to get our students to be able to go through, and that transition is going to be evolving over time, because, you know, our current freshman students haven't had that background and, you know, worth of eight years of Common Core training from K-8. So it's going to be an evolution over the next, you know, eight, 10 years, you know, till the cohort of what this year's kindergartners, I guess, have gone through that kind of eight years of that Common Core training. So it's definitely a shift in the way that we look at mathematics, and some of my colleagues seem to think it's, Common Core is more preparing us to create engineers, maybe, than pure mathematicians, because it's kind of a mixture of some of the, you know, proof-based stuff geometry's done and stuff in the past, as well as looking at more of some of the applications and being able to model situations in science and in other aspects. So that's what we're trying to move towards.
Any questions or concerns?
I'd like to compliment Justin, the math teachers with the work they're doing in terms of the after-school in-service days, you know, not waiting for when in-service days happen to fall contractually, but getting the work done because it needs to be done. And they've already addressed Algebra I, and they're following their way to geometry, and looking at creative solutions for prop and stats moving forward, so that's good work.
I did want to ask one question. Over the past few years, there've been some group of students that have had difficulty in making the transition into the Algebra I courses. With the changes at grade six, seven, and eight, is that becoming less of a problem, or have the strategies implemented by the high school addressed that issue completely?
I think us creating the lab sections that we've done in Algebra I, so our Algebra I 100 level classes now all have labs. We also have a geometry lab for students who need the extra time, so all students are being held to the same standards, we're just giving kids who need the extra time to be able to accomplish those standards that extra time, which I think has definitely helped, and we've seen that with increases in those. I think it might be too early to tell if the changes in middle school, what impact that's going to have, because we haven't really seen that yet since where they're kind of changing now. So I think a few years down the road, we're hoping that with the change in the kids that have been this Common Core curriculum, if it's more kind of coherent from K-12 or K-8, we're hoping to see that, you know, students coming into us will have those increased skills. I think it's too early, maybe, to say that, but I know the lab sections have helped kids here.
Okay, great. Good.
We are also fully implementing literacy Common Core. Now, our approach to that has been literacy across the curriculum.
Okay, great, good.
We are also fully implementing literacy Common Core. Now, our approach to that has been literacy across the curriculum. So this has resulted in intensive literacy Common Core training for full faculty led by our very capable literacy coach Erica Leclair, who's over here. Full faculty mean a pretty healthy dose of faculty meeting time devoted to this learning. We've had a number of our faculty members head off to deeper trainings. I think three or four of them went off to a week-long intensive writing institute in the summer, hosted by the Vermont Writing Collaborative, and we had regional literacy Common Core training as well. We are also putting in the hands, I guess I want to stop and say, through the generosity of this boarding, the creation of the literacy coach position. I think it's really helped Essex High School launch further and faster, I think, than a lot of our colleagues across the state. We're quite an envy, I think, of the state in that we have this resource available, in that we have somebody who can take the time to meet with teachers, support them in terms of implementation of literacy within their content area classes. And the work that Erica's doing is incredible. One example that I'll show you, if I can figure out how to get back out of here, she built a literacy toolbox. It's posted on our website, so you can see right here, it actually was a private website and we opened it up to the public and now it's become again the envy of the state. And what Erica has done is she's created a place where we can store resources for teachers. So if a teacher is looking to integrate reading within, say for example, their science class or Spanish class, a little bit slow here, there are, I'm scrolling fast, hope I don't make you dizzy, multiple resources and templates that she has found and posted here. It's a place where we're sharing things. So in other words, teachers are taking these, revising these, finding new things and also posting these. So we've built a real kind of electronic professional community here for our teachers. Every PowerPoint she uses, every resource we find outside of our district gets posted on here. It's become quite popular, so it's become the CCSU one. It's branched beyond Essex High School and our elementary schools have tapped on Erica a number of times to have her come down and let us know what she's doing up here. Struggling with seeing this mouse.
I think they just want to close, close up.
Close this one?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
No, not that one, the...
This one?
Right.
Here we go. So having an embedded coach right in your district with relationship with teachers, with somebody that, you know, somebody that can stop down the hall and say, "Help me, help me take this assessment task and make it more rigorous or make it aligned to Common Core," has meant everything. We've also done some work around reading assessment and this is again an area that Erica took some leadership. We have been implementing Star Reader at grade nine, fall and spring as a place to be able to capture some information about our students in terms of their reading ability. But we've struggled with what to do with it. We've struggled with different, you know, administration windows of it, having classroom teachers do it. Erica has really taken this one and she personally administered this assessment to every ninth grade student to ensure consistent administration of this assessment. We also upgraded upon her recommendation to Star Enterprise, which we were told would be more aligned to Common Core standards. And by having her administer it, she was able to really test the test to see if it was true. Because as you can imagine, every vendor is now aligned to Common Core. They all have the stamp on it. So that's been really helpful. And she's been running those data reports and getting the backup to classroom teachers of all content areas. We have a school-wide focus on writing. I think maybe I have some other, another duplicate slide on this. That focus has included the development of a, the development and implementation of a common writing rubric. I'm going to show you a screenshot of that. Right here. So we had a committee, a cross-curricular committee develop this writing rubric. We had Erica take it and Common Coreize it. It's a two-page rubric and it's in the hands of every teacher and we're asking them to use this as a way to have common language with our students about writing, to use common language when we give feedback about writing. Keeping in mind that, and I'll say this as somebody who was trained as a secondary social studies teacher, we don't necessarily take classes on how to teach writing and give feedback on writing. So with Erica's support, she's really helping us try to take this and make it useful within each content area. Our teachers have common, our, there was an expectation that was set that all of our teachers have a supervision and evaluation goal this year, or professional learning goal related to writing. And Erica's been offered up as a resource for them in terms of that learning. We have, Erica, I'm going to squint. I may need you to help me explain this one. At our last faculty meeting, Erica had a celebration moment where teachers had sent forward some work that they had done around it or she had sort of captured that and we posted it up for everybody to look at. Do you want to speak to this one a little bit?
Sure. So last faculty meeting, I thought it was important to not only continue to provoke people and lead people forward in terms of, you know, my objective for every faculty meeting is to make people a little bit smarter by the time they leave. And the focus this year has been around writing. I also know that a lot of people have accessed me for support and a lot of good work is going on around the building. So as a way to sort of nudge those along who maybe aren't acting as quickly as we would like them to and also to celebrate the learning and the work of others, I put together a range of writing happening around the school and made sure to really showcase not only everybody, but to draw attention to other content areas that aren't just English, language arts and history where it's a natural place where you would see writing. So this is an example of a writing assignment that Doug Horn put together for his course called How Things Work. And I got to learn a little bit about two-stroke and four-stroke engines and I got to help him. You know, one of his issues was, "Well, you know, I give this assignment and I get a paragraph or I get five pages and how do you enter consistency? And how are you more intentional with how it is you talk about writing and how you structure assignments for kids?" This is an example of how to scaffold writing for students. Some kids will need this, some won't. But what he's doing here is allowing them to know what the expectations are and in this case drawing their attention to the technical vocabulary that's required in this particular piece of writing. So again, making sense of not only our common, our school-wide rubric, but also the Common Core standards for technical subjects. Because remember, Common Core really does revolutionize how writing is taught and really does for the first time push writing across the curriculum. So it's no longer the English department saying, "Hey, you know, our kids are struggling. Our writing scores have been stagnant. We need some help." But Common Core says, "It's everybody's responsibility and we all need to get on board to learn." Doug even took me up on my advice that again, kids learn best from models. And oftentimes, you know, it takes a lot of work to do our own homework, but sometimes we can ensure that it's a good assessment. It's a good task. If we struggle to answer our own question, we should probably revise it. And again, he's teaching them how to integrate, well, how do you integrate graphics to enhance comprehension? And that's what he's doing here. He's providing them with a model of what his expectations are. So really exciting. This piece speaks to, I was finally invited into a course to co-teach and to provide not only literacy instruction to students in marine biology, but also to model literacy instruction for a science teacher. So this is an explicit model for close reading that's been touted all over, all over the country really in terms of Common Core last year. It's something that the Vermont Writing Collaborative brought our attention back to this summer. And I was able to take a chapter from Henry Bestin's The Outermost House, which we were using in marine biology to talk about the importance of not only reverence, but the importance of observation and paying attention to detail. And we developed a close reading task. This doesn't do justice to it, but this gives you an idea of what a writing task might look like. There are three choices for students. The last one is a synthesis piece. And again, we provided them a model and we use a school-wide rubric and some other, you know, scaffolding tools to not only help the teacher, become a more effective instructor of writing, but also to help kids, being the ultimate goal to grow our student achievement in writing across the board. This is another example, again, of an, you know, a different content area. This is child development and psychology. Again, right, we talk a lot about scaffolding for students. So not necessarily simplifying the task, but how do you help them enter into the game of writing and learn the structures of writing? The hope eventually is that they can do this on their own. So these are just a couple of examples. In the document, the note from the literacy coach that is part of the hard copies that you have in front of you, leads you to that literacy toolbox where I have a section called Shared Tools. And that's, you know, all assessments and tasks that I work on with teachers or things that teachers are really proud of. They send them to me and I post them here. So if you're ever interested in seeing the range of writing and the good work of your teachers, it's a good place to go. So.
And we have identified K-12, right, the development of a common K-12 writing assessment plan as a priority for our literacy vertical team. It's an area where we feel like we've never really been able to capture enough information to sort of partner up with our interim kneecap assessments. So what we'd like to do is, there's a team that's been meeting to look at ways to pilot different tasks and the resources again are wonderful. We've been looking at the Vermont Writing Collaborative and the resources that they have because we'd really like our assessment to reflect Common Core standards. And there are a number of tasks that have come out of both S-Back as well as other organizations that help to replicate that and inform our work. So I don't know if you have any questions about literacy or the focus on, you know, the school-wide focus on writing. That's been a tremendous amount of work. And then Kelly Hill is here. She's going to be doing, helping to lead the presentation around the science score. So I just have a little bit of information here and that is around Next Gen Science Standards. Our state board adopted these this past summer. The implementation plan in terms of the timeline is a little bit slow in terms of getting out, but because Kelly is working on our statewide committee, she's been, she's been in on the fly and got the skinny on what this timeline looks like. We are currently teaching to Vermont standards and Vermont GEs for science. We are currently having our students assessed using the science kneecap, which is related to those standards. If you remember a few years ago, I stood in front of you and said, "Common Core is coming. We're sort of trying to pay attention to it, but we're still teaching to the GEs." Well, we're in that same situation right now around science, which is a bit of a challenge. So as you can see the timeline, really it's about building awareness and trying to understand the standards themselves. The K-12 vertical team met a few weeks ago to review those documents. We need to start looking at what instructional shifts will be taking place, what curricular, you know, shifts, how to make those changes. And then we're expected to have full implementation 2016, 2017. It's my understanding that the state of Vermont is planning to maintain its contract with our current vendor, Measured Progress, to implement science kneecap as it is right now until spring 2016. Or spring 2016 would be its last year. Is that right? So we're going to have, again, a couple of years where we're going to be sort of, what is that, a foot and two votes, which will be a little bit of a challenge. So right now what we're doing is we're just, as you can see the timeline, exploring the potential curriculum shifts. We've accessed a very effective consultant and sent our teachers off to some initial trainings. We have some more trainings we're going to be attending this spring to try to understand what those shifts might be. Kelly's been participating at the state level and they've already begun to do some summer curriculum planning in terms of trying to conceive of what these shifts might look like. But as you can see, we have a little bit of time before we're implementing anything, so we don't want to rush. We want to be thoughtful about it. I know you have a full presentation on science data, but if you have any questions about this one slide.
Well, one thing that I look for on curriculum alignment is what are the dependencies to the ensure the alignment can be done on a date certain? And that everyone is aware of the interdependencies or the dependencies of the gates that allow that to happen.
And it's a challenge, I mean, I think Justin spoke to it a little bit, in that you're planning for an implementation of a nine through 12 set of standards without full confidence that the students coming in will have had the K-8 standards as they're written. We're particularly challenged with our multiple feeder schools that come in from outside of our district in terms of how to impact that. So, so one of our tasks is to keep in touch with Essex Town in terms of their work. Did I know what you meant?
Yes. One thing that seems to be happening here is a shift towards more lab work. Are we gradually migrating towards a con model?
When you say lab work, you mean science lab?
Well, math labs, science labs.
Well, I think that the term lab, maybe, maybe it's a misnomer. We use the term lab to define not just the science lab that's taking place in a traditional way, but that extra time, that extra intensive time?
But the con model is quite a bit different in that the reading materials are really done at home and the practice is...
Oh, the flipped classroom model? Is that what you're talking about? I know some of our teachers, I think, is it Scott, that's been exploring the idea of the flipped classroom. I know some of our students have been accessing and our teachers have been accessing things like Con Academy.
Yeah, I just had personal experience where I know that that's very effective, can be more effective for certain students.
Have you had much conversation, Kelly, among your colleagues about?
No.
Haven't, okay. Okay.
I think, you know, this kind of shift, this Common Core standard shift, I think that it's, it's, you heard Justin say it and I think it's significant in that both include not only a content shift, but practices shift and a disposition shift and they go hand in hand. And so where we're talking about the standards of practice and math and we're not talking about new dispositions for kids, which may lend itself to that kind of environment. The same thing is occurring in science in that there are new science and engineering practices that we're expected to do.
I think you have to be careful with a flipped classroom like that. I think you're right on that. For some students that works well. The problems come in is that if, you know, if they're going home and they're doing the learning and then they're expected to come in and do the practice, if those students aren't going home and doing that learning, then it becomes a big problem. If they're not self-motivated, if they're not going home and doing the learning first, that practice becomes very difficult to do inside the classroom.
Right.
And the way that we are using that lab time is not really a lab. It's just one and a half times the amount of minutes in a classroom that allows the students to get those standards.
Got it.
And I guess that's what I meant by the dispositions. Our hope is the active learning, that, you know, that this, it would motivate students to play their role in that kind of a relationship, but I don't know that we're there just yet.
Okay, that's good.
Kelly, did you want to say anything else or did you want to ask any questions? I know you're going to have science data in front of you in a minute.
I'll have more in about this in my...
Perfect.
Amy?
Yes.
I'm just wondering, is...
Is everyone in the same boat, in the same timeline across the country?
Not every state has adopted Next Generation Science Standards. This is a smaller effort than Common Core. I think there were initially 20 states, is that right, that were initial, you know, writing partners and I don't know, I haven't followed exactly how many have adopted.
Twenty-six, I think.
Twenty-six have adopted. So it's a smaller effort, but it's still significant in that it's not just Vermont or it's not just Vermont, New Hampshire, Rhode Island. In terms of timelines, state timeline, I couldn't answer that. I don't know if you've heard anything.
That's just the state. I don't, I don't know if they call it any other.
Because I'm just wondering, is this, whether anyone can serve as sort of a scout of just being out a little, a little bit further along the way?
Yeah, I think the National Science Teachers Association is kind of taking the lead on this work. They actually have a lot of resources. And so I think that, you know, we're kind of paying attention to what they're doing and they've been great about. In fact, some people look to their website before they go to the official Next Gen website because they kind of put it in a much more user-friendly manner. So I think as long as we're paying attention to NSTA, I think we're seeing what other states might be doing as well.
And at the classroom level, I mean, some of our middle-level and high school teachers have begun to look at some of the shifts. And one of the questions we asked at the vertical team meeting is, "Well, if you teach this, if it doesn't harm sort of your expectations towards kneecap, can you start to make some of those shifts?" And I know that you talked about, I think, some units, or maybe it was Erin that talked about some units that she's sort of dabbling with it. The middle school and high school science teachers have had more time, I think, to experience it and are more motivated than the K-5. And I say this with respect to the K-5 in that they are dealing with significant shifts in math and literacy right now. So we want to try to keep their focus on that and not overwhelm them with a third significant shift. We've adopted a school-wide approach towards curriculum mapping. This is a strategy, it's an instructional planning tool that every one of the schools around our, within our supervisory union have engaged in. And it is simple as writing out your curriculum or your plan for the year with a lens towards, a fine-tuned lens towards what are your concepts, content and skill and breaking it down in that way. We've been doing it using Google Docs because one of the benefits of curriculum mapping is transparency, that we're opening up our doors and sharing with each other as colleagues. We have the same curriculum. We teach the same class, but how is it that you teach it? How do you plan it out? So what we've done is we've trained every teacher here. A number of CTE teachers have also been trained in curriculum mapping. As I mentioned, the goal is to increase transparency about the learning goals and the proficiencies within and across courses. So it allows us, it gives us one step closer to having those conversations about proficiencies and common proficiencies. It enables us to continue working on common assessments because now we're talking about what's going on in the same classrooms. It's opened up conversations about grading practices. It looks for improved consistency in curriculum. If you're spending 12 weeks and I'm spending six weeks, what is it? If you think, consider this thing to be a content and I consider it to be concept, is, you know, are there differences in terms of the way that we approach it? It's a handy tool when you have new standards coming your way. So now we can pose the question, so bring your curriculum app. Now we need to embed these standards. Where will they be? How will that look? It allows us to increase rigor, be more efficient, I think, with it. As I said, support transition to new standards and it does inform our work when we think about multiple flexible pathways. If we're going to say this class will get you here or provide you with, we need to have more depth than the traditional course expectation document. So it's a, it's an internal mechanism that we've been using. Our curriculum content leaders were trained in it last year and they each wrote their maps and now all teachers, we set a goal of having all teachers trained by Christmas, or Christmas, Thanksgiving, and we managed to pull that off. So that's been a significant amount of time and from my point of view, walking around the building on November 26th and walking into classrooms in... the building on November 26th and walking into classrooms and seeing all of the teachers sitting and talking about the way that they're teaching Shakespeare and what resources they're using, it's, I think it's a real gift to be able to see teachers engage in that professional conversation. Any questions about that? This is the next one, and it's the biggie. It's the last one, and it's the biggie. So, we have a new state test coming. Statewide, we're implementing S-Back spring 2015. As you, I'm sure you know, Essex High School was selected to field test S-Back, the Smarter Balance Assessment Consortium, our new state test, this spring. We did not participate in fall kneecap. The timeline is such, well, actually, we will be field testing it this spring. Towards that end, on November 25th, you see a shot of a number of teachers sitting over here in this room. We were spread out throughout the building. We had 140 high-school teachers sitting and taking the practice S-Back. This is a test, I'll talk a little bit more about it, that is primarily computer-based. We asked the teachers to take the test. They could choose either math or literacy. They took not only the test, but the performance tasks that were assigned to those, which was two separate, you know, two separate halves of a test. It took a couple hours, and then we pulled them together and asked them to reflect on what were the skills that they feel that they needed to exhibit in order to perform on this test against the Common Core standards. We've done this in a number of our other elementary buildings, and what we found is it really made those standards come alive. You really got to see it. We have the field test coming this spring, March, April. We have about a three-week window to put 300 students through a field test. We will not receive the results from this. Actually, let me show you here. All 11th grade students will be participating. There will be no student-level data that will be produced by field testing. We are testing the items. We've been selected to do that. There will be a computer adaptive testing portion, and we just, after I wrote this, found out that there will also be a performance task. We will need about four hours to administer the language arts test and four hours to administer the math test. We're literally learning every day something new about this field test. We have a committee that's been pulled together of interested teachers. We nicknamed it the coolest committee ever, the S-Back Field Test Committee. But in all honesty, we want to make sure that this is done in a meaningful way. If our students are going to sit through eight hours of assessments and not receive results, we want to make sure we get the most out of it. We want to watch them take this assessment and learn as much as we can.
So, when they're taking the test, if they get a particularly, a particular question wrong, it will automatically adapt and drop down to an easier component? Oh, okay.
There are two parts to this test. Now, we're not going to see all of this, but a year from now, we will see a three-month window to administer the computer adaptive testing portion, the CAP portion of this, and it's exactly as you described, that I would take, you know, I would respond to a particular item, and then it would shoot me to the next developmentally appropriate item, that it will bounce me up and down a bit so that over time, they're really clear about the confidence band for that particular student, and that the score will be produced immediately, and that over time, they'll have a gain score. So, I'll know that this number to this number means I've gained this much.
Excellent.
The reason we're field testing this is to help build this. So, our students in the field test this spring will not experience that individualized piece because the purpose of that is to sort of kick the tires on the items themselves. There's a second part to the test, which is a performance task. This is what I meant by our teachers took both of these. That would be mid-year, we understand, and it's going to be more of an extended project. There's going to be a research-based piece to it. They'll get the information from a computer, they'll do some work on it, and they'll come back and produce it back on a computer individually. We are learning more and more every day about this. We don't have all the answers. I wish I could tell you that we did. But this is a significant shift for our students in terms of a way to take an assessment. Some of the observations that the teachers picked up on were not surprising, and that is, well, the task itself, boy, this is an integrated task. I need to read, I need to write, I need to understand the vocabulary, and I need to read on a split screen, know that I can scroll up and down on that screen, answer it over here, know I can scroll up and down, know that I can hit, I'll come back to it later, know that I could hit text-to-speech. Those are skills that our students are not necessarily comfortable with. So, we're exploring ways that we can put this in front of students prior to the full test so that they can start to see what some of these look like. So, that's why, back to here, our teachers sat spread out around the building. We had a number of people running around saying, "Windows 7 is not working. Quick, get on, get on an XP," so that we could really kick the tires on this one. Do you want to speak to your experience of taking the test or your thoughts about it at all? Any of you, you all sat and took it?
It was hard.
Yeah, as far as the math goes, there's just a lot of those little nuances that Amy talked about that this kid's going to be aware of. For example, the graphing calculator, us 14 math teachers found it incredibly annoying the way that the calculator on that program is, functions and so forth, and they're not allowed to have their own because there are some tasks that they have to solve without a calculator, and there are some tasks they are allowed to use a calculator on. So, it turns on and off for them. It only allows them calculators for the questions they want them to use calculators on and so forth. So, it's not like they can have the calculator they're used to. So, one of the outcomes that we came with is that we definitely at least have to show some of these tasks and show the kids how the calculator works, because that pops up, but then it pops up and you can't see the screen behind it, so you can't, like, go back and forth. So, one of the things we noticed, you have enough, have to have enough room to be able to write some things down and jot some things down. In the way a lot of our computer labs are set up, there's not a lot of actual desk space. You got your computer, you got your keyboard, but there's not a lot of room to do anything else. So, we've been brainstorming, what do you do about that? Do you stagger kids every other computer, different things? But there's definitely some nuances to the test, and I'm sure English or language arts the same way, that kids got to, have to see before we actually just throw it in front of them in March.
To speak to the ELA, the literacy test, I've now taken the third, the fourth, the fifth, the eighth, and the 11th grade S-Back pilot. And it's, if you go to the toolbox and you click on S-Back, it's the first link, and you can go there and take the test, too. What's really interesting is the third-grade test is not all that different than the 11th grade test. So, it really does echo the organization and design of the Common Core in terms of reflecting that kids are really practicing the same literacy skills, K-12. What increases is task complexity and text complexity, and obviously, the amount of rigor and habits of mind kids need in order to do well. So, from my perspective, I would hope that our juniors by the spring of their junior year could really do well on this assessment. I think it's a good one. I think it reflects the skills that they need to be college and career-ready, but we certainly have work to do in terms of, again, continuing to cultivate the habits of mind that kids are going to need to have the willingness and the persistence to grapple with text, to reread, to toggle back and forth, and it's serious business.
And persistence. That's the word that kept coming up. It's just perseverance.
Is it worthwhile to consider a tutorial that students can sign into to get that familiarization? I mean, there's just so many students, and there's so little time.
Well, I mean, I think there's, how do we prepare the current juniors for what's going to happen to them, you know, for that three-week period, and then the following group? As we, the vertical teams, as we start looking at our assessment plan and start to align it to Common Core, one consideration is, is there a web-based or a technology-based assessment that could do this? Because we do need kids to get more and more comfortable with this.
Right.
We don't want to choose a task or a tool that doesn't reflect the tasks we want them to do. So, we want to make sure that we're careful about that, not just shoot for the snazziest web-based one. But it's a real concern, and we want to make sure our students are ready for this.
Yeah.
I would also echo that the technology is not going to get in the way for students on the literacy test. That's not the challenge. I think they're going to be pretty comfortable with the interaction between the computer. I think some of our teachers were a little bit more nervous about it than our students will be. But again, I think it's the rigor and the expectation, the synthesis component. You're looking at multiple resources that reflect the same topic, and to be able to digest that content and to write with understanding is a challenge, and kids need a lot of practice with sophisticated, rigorous tasks.
Okay.
Cameron, Leanne, did you want to add anything?
And I think the technology part can be, if you're not efficient, I mean, it's a lot of students that come to the high school and they are not computer literate.
The keyboarding piece, absolutely.
Or moving around the computer, knowing how to do things, what does this mean, what does this symbol mean, the typing, that whole technology piece. As I sat there, and I'm very savvy, I was thinking, I was thinking about some of my students, they're going to have a hard time even getting through the test in that timeframe because they are slow on the computer, too.
One of the, one of the discussions that we had about a year ago had to do with the changing of graduation requirements, where some computer skills would be added to the graduation requirements, is that when, as an outcome, I'm still waiting at the board level to see if a recommendation is coming, but is it...
Computer applications, or it's been renamed, computer literacy is a graduation requirement right now. One of our challenges is the delivery of it. We tried for one year putting it in ninth grade, which would make the most sense if you want to make sure you give the skills to the students to move forward.
Right.
The trouble is, it competed with everything else we wanted ninth graders to have, and we got strong feedback from students that that was a hardship on them. But that's an area that Pam and I have talked about, and we've spoken with the K-8 about it as well, that we aren't receiving kids that have very strong keyboarding skills. It's one of those areas that competing interests, where does it lie? And our middle schools and our elementary schools are struggling with it as well, but there've been some proposals that have been put forward that we're trying to figure out. But, yeah, having students type with their thumbs is not ideal on a test.
Right.
So, there are other technology considerations, and we did sit here in this little space just a few days ago saying, "Do we put them in front of laptops? Do we bring them to the lab? How do we do this? 300 students, how are we going to get through this?" There's the three-week process, and then there's the three-month, and we're trying to find solutions for both of them. But I'm sharing with you that that's something that may come back in terms of our needs for software, hardware, infrastructure. We've already spoken about trying to find ways to get students more experienced with computers and technology-enhanced assessments. Supporting struggling learners. This is a new delivery system for accommodations, where we used to bring students out of the room when it said in their IP to read to them. Now, they're going to click a button and hit a text-to-voice, voice-to-text kind of system, and that's a little bit different. We will see data soon. In other words, the data is produced immediately, and that's nice for the students, and it's certainly nice for us. There will be a gain score. That's going to be nice for us in terms of looking at a growth-based model. But we're also going to need to think about some teacher training around technology as well because they'll be in the room with students when they're struggling.
So, I would just add that some of the decisions that are happening with our K-8 system to provide one-to-one devices is helping our students get more facile with using technology. Amy makes a good point about when to find the time. It's a struggle in the K-8 curriculum as well. So, our middle schools, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade all have one-to-one devices, and in Westford, five to eight, so that helps. But the point she made, kids coming in from all different kinds of sending schools, they don't have the same equal access. And quite honestly, Erica came and administered, and we all, at the educational leadership team level, participated in taking S-Back, and that split screen on a mini was a challenge, and toggling back and forth in two different scroll bars, it, you know, I could see some, I was just trying to imagine a third grader or a fourth grader trying to do that, plus the conceptual work that you need to do as well. So, it's going to be a huge transition, and I think there's a concern probably throughout the country about not only testing a new core of standards, but also a new computer adaptive testing platform and what our scores might look like the first few years out.
I sat next to my son, driving him home this morning, or driving him in this morning, and said, "You are the first batch that gets to take this." He was not necessarily excited about that. Just one additional slide I'll share with you because I think it will, it touches on some of the things that you talked about earlier in your meeting, and it will, I think, tee up for some of the work that Rob's been leading. It would be nice if we could talk about just school improvement in terms of those homegrown ideas, but then legislation happens, and sometimes those are good leverage points to move us forward in areas that we were looking to move forward, but you always have to kind of find space for it. So, recently, you've, I think, learned from Superintendent about the proposed Vermont Education Quality Standards. Three areas in particular that will impact our work are around proficiency-based learning and graduation requirements. So, we're waiting on that decision from the state board about the adoption of that because it will really help us to launch our work in looking at that. If you've looked at that section, it really flips Carnegie units. It refers to them as a record-keeping. It really puts proficiency-based learning first and Carnegie units second, as opposed to the other way around, which it currently sits in Vermont's School Quality Standards. And the teacher leaders here have looked at that. It redefines curriculum within, I think, seven or eight different strands, as opposed to a traditional breakout that you would normally see in a secondary setting. The language around flexible pathways and multiple flexible pathways are alive and well in that document, as well as, as Rob mentioned, a critical part of the work that we're doing with New England Secondary. And that's an area that our curriculum content areas have talked about, well, what do those pathways look like? Are they career pathways? Are they inherent learning pathways? And how do our courses help them? What are our kids choosing on their own without us designing pathways for them? And then our work around personalized learning plans. We're waiting for some technical assistance out of the state on this one. I think it's going to be due out in January.
Yeah, in January.
Before we move much further, we don't want to head down a road and then find out that the state's advising us somewhere else, but this is an area that, it's the seven through 12 body of work.
One thing we've discussed at the Chitney County Principals' Meeting is we would like every school in the county to use the same template for personal learning plans, and both Director Travers and his colleague, Arlington Tech Center is in complete agreement so that we don't have multiple different plans filtering into different schools, especially with school choice now more in vogue.
You have some content area representatives here that weren't necessarily part of these slides, but they certainly have taken some time to write something. If you want to take any time to ask any questions of them or make any comments about what you've read in your report while Kelly closes the gates.
I was just going to comment that both Pam, with a community internship project, among the many other things that she does, and Leanne as a STEM Academy leader, and also facilitating some experiential learning opportunities for her students, and in addition to some of the work you've done in your algebra classes, maybe of interest to the board as well. So, you have some pretty creative and innovative teachers, teacher leaders in your midst. So, if you have any comments or questions, or if you ladies would like to say anything as a kickoff, it's an opportunity. I've been very impressed with what they've done.
Thirty years ago, I was using adaptive learning models.
One of the things that caught my eye, and Justin, thank you, since you were first tonight, you brought it forward, but I saw a recurring theme over and over is really, you know, the K-12 curriculum here. And I know we're learning community leads in high school, but we talk about algebra in the eighth grade, for example, and how comparable it is to what's going on in our high school. I think in world languages, too, there's, you know, in the, in the sixth through eight, we have language exposure to our, to our students in the intermediate schools so that when they come to high school, we can immediately go to the second or third year of, you know, world languages. I see that's appropriate in science. Pam, I see in your write-up, you talk about what we just talked about here, the inconsistency of keyboarding skills from our sending schools and that the fourth grade, what the fourth grade students are required to do, you know, with the keyboarding and how that, how that, you know, proliferates up. So, I'm pleased to see that you as, you know, CCLs and LCLs are taking the lead and working with your cohorts in the sending schools, because we don't want to invest our time trying to get the kids up to a standard. We need to invest, you know, make those investments at the K through eight levels. And this board recognizes it, even though it's beyond what our board has jurisdiction over, you know? So, thank you in that. The, one that wasn't here tonight, and I'm curious about, I guess it's because it's not, it's not on...
You're struggling with technology.
No, that's fine. Because it's not S-Back or Common Core standard, is in the fine arts area, and I don't know[1758.91] And I don't know if you can comment on that, Amy. You know, our board is making investment, I know we're not, we're going to hear about, I know Leanne is here from STEM, but, you know, the Visual and Performing Arts Academy, this board has made investments in that, and that's a core topic of proficiency that some students will want to pursue. Is there anything in that area that we can talk about, about curriculum transparencies across?
Sure, they all engaged in curriculum mapping, and I was able to sit in this back room and let them share, and hear them talk about the courses. And what was nice was they began to really find themes that were consistent across their courses. I know that Carrie Anne has been working really diligently, K-12, with her other colleagues in terms of revisiting. There's a common benchmark, a common assessment that they had set up around the self-portrait, that she was looking at ways of revisiting that benchmark, and ways to potentially create electronic portfolios that students would collect that over time. It's a challenge, as you can imagine, because we don't have all of the students who come into our school system. But EMS has been great about collaborating with us on that. I know that they're always looking at their offerings, in terms of trying to find a way to be able to provide rigor for students who really want an intensive experience in the arts, as well as be inclusive and open to students, so that they see that as an opportunity for them. That's, again, open to them and not an exclusive one. I know Josh and Leanne and I talked about coming back and talking about the academy, and I think that maybe a spring, I don't know what your schedule looks like, but I know that they both love to come and be able to talk about how those have shaped up. So in terms of the arts, there's the fine arts offerings and experience in the curriculum, and then there's AVPA, and they're obviously connected to each other. But there've been some really good conversations about AVPA connecting with STEM and like a sort of a STEAM model. I know that Carrie Anne has been facilitating some conversations with science, right? The art and design of science was a course, looking at ways to try to integrate across content areas. I know they had a similar conversation with a course that had run years ago, I think it was in the ninth grade, a humanities course, that involved not just social studies and English, but the arts. So certainly there's work that's been done on that one, I don't know if there was something in particular that you had in mind.
Don't, don't, that's, that's, thank you.
I can also clarify that several of the teachers from the fine arts and practical arts have reached out for literacy support and help, and trying to figure out how they can play a supporting role in the implementation of Common Core through things like critiquing. So there are specific speaking and listening skills that are certainly things that they can take ownership of. And certainly with the film class, and I've worked a lot with Josh in terms of just developing tools where they can be more intentional about talking about writing, and how they can harness the reflective piece, since those are skills that they really do draw upon in those areas.
Thank you.
I guess I just, pardon me as I loop around the thought here to then just sort of ask and get a peace of mind. It jumps from what you said, the experiential education with the internship and the STEM launches into what I guess I see now more and more as a theme of sort of a search for relevancy. You know, I see it where my kids are there, that we're starting to understand that something that's relevant, you know, and sort of meaning brings it to the kids, and there's a greater engagement there. A little bit better than sort of that you just need to memorize the next thirty pages out of that kind of course. I'm assuming it is, but I want to hear, Common Core fully embracing this, this idea? That there isn't, there's no, nothing at odds here as we move to the next standards? No challenges ahead of us as we continue to push towards relevancy and things that are current and real for the students? More good stuff ahead?
I think in math, it definitely is, I think that's kind of this idea of modeling, where you're not just sitting there and memorizing formulas and those kinds of things. It's where, you know, you guys heard of Dan Meyer, who tries to throw up these interesting problems at the beginning of units, and tries to catch the kid's eye, you know, and then they're inquisitive on how do I solve that problem? Because I'm interested in it, I want to know how to get the answer, and then that leads into the math behind how to model that situation, or how to solve that problem. So I don't think it's at odds at all, I think Common Core and the idea of trying to make it relevant for kids will be hand in hand. But it takes a lot more time to do that, which is the hard thing, is to really get, make something relevant, and to really be able to look at those situations. And fun math tends to be difficult math, you know, it's for a lot of the kids. When, you know, any problem that's worth solving tends to be a difficult one, or tends to be one that's going to take time to solve, and something that you just can't Google in three seconds. So, but yes, I think Common Core and relevancy go hand in hand.
As far as literacy is concerned, the standards really outline what students need to know, really need to do, so they're really skills-based, and it really puts the onus on the teacher to figure out the what, and really to develop the task. So we have a lot of models to play with, and also balances, you know, high interest, so you build fluency and stamina in terms of writing, in terms of reading. But also there is, you know, some echoes of a degree of cultural literacy, and certain, you know, classical complex texts like Thoreau, and Kennedy's inaugural, and certain things that kids should be able to engage in, and to, you know, to analyze and maybe pair with, you know, an excerpt from Obama's speech and see the echoes. So I think it's a balance between, you know, rigor and relevancy and cultural literacy and what's current.
It's not being said, it will require intentionality. I mean, Leanne is working pretty hard to get her STEM students out, and it requires a great deal of work, and this is something that Rob's really been supportive of. And Pam's work with internship, I mean, it's not an easy task to have students leave the building and hope that they represent well, and that their learning is good, and that their connections are positive that are outside the school.
Is it brings the standards to any content area. So it's just not focused on, you know, it used to be written pretty content-specific, and now you can really like, oh, well, we do this at driver's ed. You know, they've created a writing, really great writing project, and so I'm seeing it in the non-traditional content areas that it's really, oh, okay, great. So that's what I like about the Common Core also.
Ready for science?
Yep.
We have some data, sit back and hear some data. Thank you.
Sure, I had to listen to you. Next time, I'm going first.
So I was just trying to figure out what you might want to hear about, so I probably put too much in here, but I wasn't sure what your questions might be. So I just put together a few statistics, just to give you a sense of where we're at at this point. This is a little misleading, because I know you're thinking, we don't have that many kids in the school, and it's just because there are some kids taking more than one science. So at this point, we have four hundred ninety-three enrolled students in seventeen different science classes this fall. And some of that fourteen hundred ninety-three is the same kids, because we have kids at double. We added two new electives in science, one is marine biology, which we had a hundred and six requests, and the other was organic chemistry, which we had thirty-four requests. And those requests came from an interest in the part of the teacher to teach that, and also interest, they ask kids, what do you think? And the kids were like, yeah, we'd like to have a chance to take these classes. So, of course, the flip side is, in having two new electives, we had two that didn't run. And so we kind of met our upper limit of how many kids we could potentially serve at a given time in our classes with our rooms and the number of teachers we have. So we did not run this year AP Environmental Science and Ecology, they did not have enough kids. So what we plan to do is putting into the program of studies for next year is we'd like to run them on an alternating basis. Yeah.
Can you just put into context a hundred and six? That seems like a big number, is that abnormal?
It is a big number, yeah, it's a lot, yeah. We do actually have other electives that have quite a number as well. For example, in admin physiology, we actually run three sections of that, and there's twenty-something in each. And that's pretty, basically, pretty consistent for the past few years. But that is definitely the winner in terms of the number that we have. So we only offered one section of it, and it went both semesters. So, you know, it just was, we kind of met our upper limit in terms of how much we could offer.
It's science in motion there, two added, two didn't return, for every action, there's an equal and opposite.
And only so much time in the day.
That's right, that's right. So I also thought it might be interested to look at how many credits our students are taking in science. When we look at grad requirements, they only are required to take three credits, and the only specification is that one has to be a natural science, one has to be a physical science. We don't say you have to take this, this, or this. However, it's pretty cool, if you click, we'll see the average. On average, at least for the past two years, the number's about five point two, even though they're only required to take three, the average is five point two. And it's pretty cool when you see kids taking, you know, that many science credits. So, thank you for your support over the years that we're able to do this. I mean, we couldn't do that without the support of, you know, the board and Rob being able to say, yeah, let's run a bunch of science classes, because kids will want to take them, so we're happy to see that kind of number that we have.
I'd just like to jump in and just say, I've had a conversation with many of the students in the two new classes this year, and they absolutely love the experience they're having, relevance, going to help them beyond making the connection, in particular the organic. So it's outstanding student feedback so far.
Yeah, I was amazed to have one of my tenth graders at the beginning of the year tell me she was looking forward to taking organic chemistry. And I thought, wow, you even know what that is, you know, I was amazed, so. And to achieve that number of credits, they obviously, at some point, they need to double in science in order to get that large number that they have. So we ran these numbers, just got them last week. One thing that we're seeing a little bit more of a trend is we're getting a few more in the ninth grade. So these kids are taking Earth and Physical Science and Biology. And then we have, this is usually Biology and Chemistry. And then, it was, it's kind of a weird thing going on with eleventh and twelfth, and we don't really know why. Because when we looked at it, we thought, oh yeah, there's a lot of doublers, eleventh grade is usually Physics and Chemistry. If they double in twelfth grade, you know, it could be an AP level in Physics. But I'm not sure why there's so many for this, this is a class of two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, a lot of doubling, but not so much there. So, you know, I think we'll want to look at it this year as well to kind of see if there's a pattern. But that was just something we noticed. But the good news is, we've got a lot of kids taking a lot of science, and, you know, we like that, so.
Kelly, didn't last year we have two AP Environmental Science?
Yeah, yeah, so that also-
Just for the board's information, that's kind of why we didn't get the numbers this year, because we had two the previous year.
Yes, yeah, so that may be it too, so we will explore that a little bit more. This is something Rob put together, when we look at, if you click one more, that, you know, what, after kids take three credits, most of our kids are taking Earth and Physical Science, Biology, and Chemistry, and then what happens beyond that? So it's good news to know that at least fifty percent are taking Physics. And you can see that the numbers over the last three years. And we have three Physics classes, we have one hundred, two hundred, and then AP. So that's good news, although the hard thing is that it's after kneecap testing, so this is usually senior year. Kneecap testing is spring of junior year, and it's hard because there's Physics on the test. So it's a tricky thing in terms of how do you get in as much as the kneecap, or the whatever we'll end up having for our next assessment. It's really a three-year test, and our curriculum is four-year curriculum, so. But it's good news to have kids, that many kids taking Physics. Sometimes we call this the madcap kneecap recap, and it's good news, because we thought that, you click on it one more time, we thought this was maybe just a little bit of a temporary thing, and it turned out it was, so our scores did go back up. Not to blame it on that particular class of kids, but they did seem to have-
Struggled in the other areas as well.
They struggled in other areas as well, so we thought maybe it's that cohort, and it turns out that it seemed to be. So we went back up. Now, one thing that was different last year is we just had the test all in one day, and that was the first time we'd done it that way. And then there was no academic classes for those kids. So they came in, took the three different sections of the test, and then they went home after having lunch. So that was a different thing, one more-
Just a question on that, is that something that our school chose to do on our own?
Yeah.
Yes.
So it's just interesting.
You're given a window, so you can decide the, you know, the best way to administer it.
So other schools or other states could be administering it entirely differently?
But it's a good point, though, Erin, because if you put yourself in the position of a junior student, who we want to perform as well as he or she can, and then after that, three to four-hour experience, to then say, well, you've also got to do X number of courses after lunch, and your homework, and all that goes into it. And I think we found good results with this approach.
Yeah, definitely what made us think that we could do this again. So we actually have the second highest proficiency in the state. Stowe has been consistently near the top, and when we look at their curriculum, they have a pretty basic offering, and they, I think they require certain courses too, and they don't have a lot as many elected as we do. So, you know, just looking at what, how are they able to do that, gives us a little bit of a window into that. So it was nice to see us kind of go back up again, but we've been pretty consistently high, usually one of the, you know, top scoring in the state.
And then do you drill down on something like Stowe's, like so much of this is that the test means so much more to us than it does to the students taking it? So do you drill down on sort of Stowe's motivation tactics and stuff like that?
We haven't yet, but we certainly, it certainly is something to look at, yeah.
I mean, because you could, they, I mean, you could have kids that are curriculum, you know, ready, but there could be a whole lot of other reasons why it's just a test that, you know, isn't really going to mean a lot for them.
Yeah, that's right, yeah, it's certainly something we could look at.
And I keep thinking with multiple states now taking Smarter Balance Assessment or Park, and now multiple states taking a new assessment towards this, I'm starting to wonder if higher ed will start to look at this as maybe you could use these scores for entry, because that is something that we've struggled with. The students, as much as they've scored very well, and they came in, and we let them go home, still isn't something they can do something with tangibly.
It's harder and harder to find a higher ed school that uses a test optional right now.
Right, right.
So I don't think they'll, I don't think they'll start making a test required.
I'll have to go back to ski passes then.
That could work.
Could you go back to the other slide, please?
Sure.
That could really work.
I'm just looking, it looks good seeing that fifty-two percent, if I read this correctly, for proficiency.
Right, the blue line.
Yeah, we usually add together proficient and proficient with distinctive, so you usually add those two.
All right, but I'm looking just at the green versus the bottom, it seems like we now have a wider gap. So even though we have more that are proficient, we did not, we still have about the same amount that are substantially below proficient.
Yeah, we haven't really seemed to make gains in that. And actually, I'll show you a couple more slides that might help with that, you know, when we look at what the test actually involves.
You knew I was going to ask.
So, just to give you a little insight as to what's asked of them, and I'll get back to your point. So when we look at, you know, what the different categories are of the test and how we score, the inquiry section was our lowest, even though we're still above the state average, it's still our lowest. So let me give you a little insight of what that's like. So imagine you're a student, just keep clicking, keep going. So the particular inquiry task that was last year, and they released the task for us to look at, they don't release all the questions, they just give us some. So this was called the Lifetime of the Sun, and what involved was nine pages of stuff for kids to look through and read, eight questions they had to answer, fourteen paragraphs that they had to read through, two graphs, one table, one diagram, and a portrait of a bear.
Oh no.
Just, there we go.
Okay.
So, one of the things that came up when we think about, and it goes back to the S back thing about persistence, and it's, there's a lot of reading and writing to this. So one piece is to getting all of our kids to do better, is to improve reading and writing, which is where the literacy across all our areas is very helpful. So I'm thinking as we can have more literacy going across and that experience, I think it will help. And also that persistence piece, this was the last part that the kids did, so they've been testing, and, you know, they're getting a little tired by this time, and they had to sort through all this information. So I think as we see more experience with S back and practice with that, they'll also do better on this as well. So I think that'll be helpful. But we can do better, certainly. There's a constructed response, you know, where the kids had to read and write. And the thing that's a little tricky about this is that they had to look at some information from a couple sources, and then they had to remember what they learned in ninth grade, because we have Earth Science in ninth grade. So they're taking this as eleventh graders. So they have to remember, what did I remember about plate boundaries? And if you go one more, so they had to look at this, and then they had to remember that along, if they chose, actually, this would have been a smart one, because it's, you know, earthquakes, they can usually remember that, that's what happened. But if they happen to choose something else like this, they had to remember from ninth grade, what happens at that kind of boundary. So that's one step that they have to do, and then they have to go back and write about it. So I think that that's also a- So, I think that that's also a tricky thing is, they're tested 11th grade, but some things they learn earlier, so. Any questions about that before we-
Oh, hey.
Well, no, I wanted that because we're going to spin our brains a little bit about-
Okay. Before we spin our brains.
Before we spin our brains, did anyone have anything about?
Yeah, I had a question about the, uh, the 42%, 43%. Did you break out the cohorts?
We didn't, we didn't break it out. It is broken out, but we didn't, for what I glanced at it, it seemed to be about the same as in the past, where there are definitely groups that we could do better. There didn't seem to be much difference, difference between male, female. But it, there's definitely the, um, you know, the population that we wanting to keep trying to improve with, you know, that just seemed pretty consistent.
Is that what you meant by cohort?
Yeah, I'm a little bit concerned about the, uh, 22% that are on free and reduced and how they're performing relative, how, what percentage of that group is in that 43%? Is it something that we're, that we need to reach out differently? Is there anything we can do?
I think as a school, we have a lot of things that we've been, there's a lot of interventions that we've been doing. Um, in the time I've been here, I'm just amazed that we have so many more programs, we have so many more resources. Um, I definitely think we're, we're trying.
That's okay, I can go online and look at it.
Yeah.
I, I kind of get wonder, you know, because it's a fairly consistent number.
Yeah, and, and we haven't changed much in that regard. And I, I don't know about math and, you know, with math and language arts, if we've hit that cohort.
I think it varies. You know, one of the things, you know, I, I'm hopeful for, anytime that there's a, a change in curriculum, a change of standards, it gives an opportunity for people across the region to sit down together and problem solve this. Students of poverty tend to have more transitions in their life, so they tend to move from schools to school a little bit more. Anytime we have these changes, I'm just hopeful that we can tighten up regionally the offerings. I think one of our challenges for Kneecap is that it isn't given every year.
Right.
And so, there are these big gaps in data that are really hard for us to, to make judgments about. I will share that when we looked at the fourth and eighth grade results, inquiry was again the lowest area. And statewide, that's an area I think that we're struggling with. And as we talk about the next-gen science standards, again, there's going to be practices and dispositions that are related to inquiry that we need to keep an eye on.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we've definitely looked at, you know, just what are big picture things we can do? I mean, advisory, you know, that's an area that we're working on, and who knows the impact of that as well. And there have been some, a couple of high schools in the area have made particular gains. And so, there's resources where we could ask them, you know, what have you been doing, um, in particular? Um, I want to-
More spinning.
Yeah, I want your minds to spin a little bit. I'm going to give you a couple of handouts that just help you a little bit with, um, next gen. And I'm happy to come back any time that you want, you know, in the future, to find out more about these. But I just wanted to give you a little taste of it. There's, uh, two different ones, so, yeah. So, just a couple of things to, uh, for you to at least look at at this point, so you're aware of what's, uh, what it might look like. And then if you, at some point, we can talk more about it. This is the timeline that Amy already shared with you. And, uh, you know, I've filled in a little bit more. I mean, what you're looking at right now is kind of where we're at. This year is officially an awareness year. And just like you're staring at these papers, that's pretty much what we're doing. And that's what people across the state are doing. So, that's the awareness, is looking at it and going, what is this thing in front of me? So, that's what we're, um, doing at this point. So, the first year is, there's also, there's a lot of regional workshops, we have our vertical team, a lot of stuff going on where we're sitting and looking at them and, and looking to see what they mean. Also, for, uh, Amy mentioned curriculum mapping, we've actually started to curriculum map with these in mind. So, we took these as we curriculum mapped and tried to sort out what they meant. And we can go for it, and I can start to look at these. So, the, how do you read it? So, this one that you have in front of you, just I wanted you to have so you know what some of the terms are and the way that this particular document is put together. So, the whole thing you're looking at, the page you're looking at would be called a standard. And then within that, you'll see there's performance expectations, there are disciplinary core ideas, there's cross-cutting relationships, there's technology and engineering connections. The cool thing is coming last with science, we actually have all the connections with common core. So, at the bottom of your document down here, we have, um, literacy and math. So, we know where to connect up with those topics. So, they tell us pretty specifically for science, here's where you want your students to write, here's where you want them to construct an argument, here's where you want them to do some statistics. So, that's cool. That's the nice thing about being last is that we have the chance to, we're connected up with everything else, so, that's cool. So, I provided you with, uh, this one as an example. And the reason I picked this one, in fact, it speaks to the relevant relevancy piece that you talked about. You know, this is a very relevant topic, um, climate change and human impact.
Right.
And that's one thing that keeps popping up throughout these standards. So, they definitely are, um, cutting-edge, what's happening in the world today, how can we help kids understand it? And how can we help kids problem solve about it? So, this one is the example I gave you. And I just wanted to show you, um, what we're doing this year with awareness is that we're, you know, sitting there and staring at this going, what would that look like in a classroom, and what does that mean? And you'll see the page I gave you has several of them at the top, and this one, I think, is the bottom one.
Right, next.
You can read it, High School Earth and Space Science Standard 3-5. So, it's on the page, I can give you a second to look at the bottom?
Yeah.
So, what we do is, right now, we're sta- we're looking at these, we're staring at them, we're, we're trying to figure out what that might look like. If you go and, so, this is what we did, um, Thanksgiving week with curriculum mapping, is we started to look at, what does this mean? What is this, where's the concept, where's the content, and where are the skills? So, we, I color-coded it for you on this one. So, what we do is we look at that first statement, and we're like, okay, what do kids need to be able to do? Well, they need to analyze, they need to make forecasts, they need to use a model. And then we thought, well, what content do they need? Well, they need to know about global climate, and they need to know about earth systems. And what, what, um, concepts, climate change, flow of energy. So, that's where we're at right now. And Rob's been great about giving us time and during in-service to get this work going. So, that's pretty much where we're at. We just started this, and I think most of our core courses have gotten this part done for their standards. But, just to give you a sense of what that looks like. So, some questions that come up at this point. Will this change our scope and sequence? So, what you're looking at, the Earth Science, is, um, we have that right now as a ninth grade course. When you look at what's on your page, you know, are you thinking ninth grade? I don't know. I mean, frankly, when I saw that couple of those, I thought, wow, you know, maybe 11th or 12th grade.
Yeah.
So, we've got to look as a, you know, an area, and we've got to sit down and think about, you know, is, is what we currently do for courses going to match this? Obviously, another piece would be math as well. Is there some math they need for these, and where is that appearing in our current sequence? Another question, uh, graduate requirements, that seems to be a hot topic. So, will we need to change them? You know, will we need to think about, you know, having certain courses that kids need to take in order to be able to be next-gen literate? So, that's a question. Another question, um, will we need, you know, a lot of the next-gen is engineering, problem-solving. Are we going to need equipment, teachers, facilities that we don't currently have? And the last one is, um, you know, seeing the great work that Erica did for literacy. She does a lot of the legwork, she can propose ideas, she can give teachers things to work with. You know, would it be helpful to have a science coach? And maybe even some places have math, science together. Someone who can do legwork. And in particular, next year's work, where we try to propose maybe potential course sequences and things like that. So, just a thought, is it going to, would it be a helpful thing to have?
And I appreciated that Kelly included K-12, because I mentioned earlier, facing K-5 teacher right now. It's a little scary, scary concept to, to head them towards, not only new science standards, so there's content, but science and engineering practices and design at the elementary level, and that, and, and that instructional shift and that disposition for students. It will be a significant task.
I'm just, um, I'm trying to think if I'm, if I've got the tail wagging the dog, but the sequencing seems like it gets really dictated by the S-Back and the timing of the test, you know?
Oh, yes, it does. And that's where we asked, I was at one of the meetings at the state level, and I said, you know, when is the test going to be given? And they thought, well, we think at the end of, you know, the end of junior year. And I thought, right.
Yeah.
You know? We really could use the four years, so-
For the kids.
That's just the what, for some reason, the particular, um, people that are able to make those decisions, that's what they're deciding, so.
Because I, I remember, and I think I've just gotten the board, but didn't we find that, um, we had a sequencing issue with either Earth or-
Physics.
I thought it was with Earth or Physical Science or something like that with-
Well, there was an adjustment that the science teachers made-
Mm-hmm.
For the ninth grade-
Yeah.
Yeah, with the ninth- Course to include Physics, because otherwise they were going to be totally left out.
Exactly, so we have a little Physics in ninth grade now.
Good memory.
Yep. It's true, it's, we did do that, yeah.
At least you're going to gain a little bit of time, because the S-Back will be in the spring-
That's true.
Instead of the junior, you know?
Yeah.
Oh, no, no.
Well, we'll have the same, it'll be the same for us.
It'll be the same for science.
But now it'll be the same time that they'll be having math and literacy. So, so, depending on how it's administered, you know, we could experience assessment fatigue, because it's, AP exams are given in the spring.
From, from the kid's perspective, it's grueling.
Junior year.
I'll just say that. ACTs, S-8s.
One more, I'll show the-
Right.
So, the, um-
Would you like to draw a line up?
I'm clicking, oh, here we go.
Oh, so, um, and I did want to show you that the next-gen has come up with some models that they, um, they, they have some examples of this might be the sequence you might want to have. Now, if you look at that, that doesn't mean anything, does it? The numbers and letters do match up with, like, the standards on your page. What they would say is, you're going to have a course with life science with some Earth science, you're going to have a chemistry course with some Earth science and a physics. So, with this model, takes Earth science from being its own course and sprinkles it elsewhere. They have about three or four of these models. So, that's a conversation point. At some point, we'll look at what might make sense for Essex High School, um, or the district, and go from there. Um, so, that's just one of three that they propose. And, um, that obviously would cause changes. Now, in terms of equipment, um, you know, the whole engineering piece, technology, you know, our budget this year, we do have a, you can see the purple. We did ask for a, you know, a big jump in terms of our equipment spending. Now, at the same token, our textbook went down, but we were, um, trying to put some more money into that piece. So, what, some of the stuff, uh, is related to the fab lab. So, there's some equipment there that can be accessed by our students. Certainly helpful in the areas of engineering, building, and design along those lines. I just brought a couple of cars because Joe Chase would have been here, um, if he could, but he sent cars instead. So, um, this is an example of, um, what he was able to do. So, in terms of engineering, um, he has students basically making cars. And the parts of the car are actually printed out on, um, a laser printer we have in the fab lab. And what the kids do is they design the parts on software on the computer, and then the, it, they can be really precisely printed out. Now, this was the first idea for the car that the students had, and then they changed it to this because they realized that this model, um, would go faster. So, this actually doing, going from this to this wasn't that long. In, in kind of the old days, it was, it would take you, spend a long time making your car. But now, we have a printer, a laser cutter that can cut out cardboard and make a pretty, you know, quick change. So, just to show the kind of stuff, that's the kind of equipment piece.
And we're producing students who can use laser cutters.
Yeah. And software, um, you know, some of the software, they can design, they know how to do the design on the computer. So, one thing we're thinking, um, you know, our lab space is going to, you know, this is kind of a chemistry lab we have right now. It's not ideal for, you know, it doesn't make you think about engineering and design. The lower right is one of our physics classrooms where this is where they build these. And also, you want to have some floor space to test these out. So, in terms of, you know, gradually working more toward that, we have a lot of these fixed labs stations in our rooms, and it's not very flexible. So, you know, at some point, we would kind of want to move to that. It's actually a double classroom, and it's a great place for the Physics and Robotics, um, class also meets there, so. So, just, uh-
I just comment from our earlier session tonight, in terms of learning space, I was immediately thinking of science labs. And if you look at, one example would be Franklin High School in Franklin, Massachusetts. They're building a brand-new school, and their labs have multi-three. Actually purposes in mind, and they're very much wide-open spaces that can be reconfigured. And also, when we visited, uh, New Tech High in Albany, Bob Travers and I a few years ago, similar type of opportunities for students and flexible learning spaces, so, something to consider.
Yeah, it's just, uh, just food for thought.
Yeah.
So, questions or concerns for Kelly? No, just any questions that you have.
Nice report, Kelly.
Comments. And we can send both of these PowerPoints to you. It's, um, the work, the work, I mean, it literally, vertical team meetings constantly, and it's, it's a challenge to get you timely information. So, I'm happy to send you those, and I'm sorry we couldn't get them to you sooner.
That'll work.
I guess, tell you a question I have is, to recognize the dependency is, as you said, you know, in terms of like literacy, to be able to read and interpret a requirement so that the student can then call off an execution project or something. But, not so much the vertical, uh, the, the vertical curriculum, but more of a horizontal curriculum. So, you know, in my mind, how can you do Physics unless you do Calculus? How can you do Chemistry unless you can balance an equation with algebraic techniques? You know, those kinds of, uh, you know, so, so, so certainly it's easy for me to connect the dots between math requirements and what sciences you can go for and do in the future. But, as our students, you know, is, is one of the first graphs, graphs you showed, you know, is, as they're taking multiple sciences in their high school career, are, are guidance counselors, you know, cognizant of what, what, what those measurements are for six, the prerequisites are for some of these, uh, courses? So that we can ensure and steer that the students are getting the prerequisite courses to pursue sciences?
Uh, yeah, I think so. For the most point, you know, most part, kids get put in a class where they're able to be successful. I would say that's true. The, you know, I think as we move forward, that's a great thing to keep in mind, if, if we start to think about scope and sequence changing.
Right.
You know, are they having the literacy pieces, are they having the math? Yes, so that's definitely important for us to keep in mind.
Now, I guess what I, what I'm saying, and it's more a question for administration here, is, you know, we, we, we have structured ourselves now around a model of learning communities that, um, kind of, and, and we're talking about vertical curriculums, you know, K through 12 curriculum. But, but there's some cross-pollination that must occur between the, the, uh, LCLs, you know, the learning communities also. And it's, it's, now, I don't want to spend a lot of time about here, but it's not clear to me how that cross-pollination is occurring between those, uh, communities.
Well, I, I think a, a short and quick answer would be, an example of that could be, we finished, uh, Global Best Practice work with faculty today at the faculty meeting, and the faculty members went around and on the 20 different standards in terms of the-
There you go.
The book that you all received.
Right.
So, the faculty prioritized where we needed to start work based upon recent NIAS visits and our, our own work with Global Best Practices. And so, an example of that cross-pollination could be a learning community that, that would be working on support systems for kids. So, in other words, if, if a student, uh, doesn't get the learning in mathematics, what are their supports in place, uh, across, say, Algebra I or Calculus? Regardless of the particular specific class, but in math, if they, if they're not learning the essential skills and standards, so, what's the next step collectively from the organization to the student?
I think in other areas, the curriculum content leaders are, are problem-solving together. The, the program of studies that you see here, we're in year three of them writing it together, as opposed to individually. And I know in that first year, it took a long time, because we really had to kind of educate ourselves about what was in each other's pages and what those implications were. It resulted in trying to come together around common language and coding systems and the way we talk about levels. But a good example is that we met with Justin this morning around this, this problem we're faced, which is probability statistics. And there's lots of different ways that we can try to solve it. The most expedient would be making a graduation requirement, but we don't want to sort of head there right away. So, we're proposing bringing that problem to the curriculum content leaders, because they will have multiple lenses. So we're proposing bringing that problem to the curriculum content leaders because they will have multiple lenses, science in particular. So what's the role of statistics in science? Um, I think the more we try to bring that to a school-wide lens rather than handle it in silos, it can help to lead to some of that conversation. And I certainly saw, and I know it was, it was happening prior to this, but the desire for curriculum content leaders to support conversations around integration within classes and across classes.
Right.
Our model doesn't always allow us to do that. You know, when you don't share kids specifically, it's hard to find those integration opportunities, but they're very motivated to find them.
When you have the opportunity to talk about common issues across the building that are out of silos, you get the opportunity for creative thinking and interdisciplinary courses, which immediately goes back to Brian's comment earlier about relevance, which really hits home with the students.
Right, right. I just, I, I'm sorry, I just, I remember a couple of years ago, Rob, we had a conversation, we talked about ninth grade core curriculum. And one of the topics there was, uh, Shakespeare's Romeo and Juliet as a topic, okay? And then how, how, how that translated to literacy, how it translated to foreign languages, how it translated into social studies, how it translated to.
Health.
Health, health issues and so forth. And there were, so, so that one theme, or that one, uh, common thread had all these applications that, that was, you know, very applicable to many different areas. And, and that was interesting for me to s- to see that and hope that we could use that, you know, as a model for, for how to find other common topics like this, you know, so.
I'm still a little bit, uh, it looks like you've got a lot of body of work to do in front of you and very little time relatively. So, I, I guess, uh, it's a matter, when I read through all the things that have been going on, it kind of sounds like these curriculum content leaders and the LCLs need more time to do that work. I'm kind of wondering if that should be built into our budgets.
I think it's, well, Kelly, you can answer. Certainly what I'm hearing is it's, it's curriculum content leader time together. Um, the challenge is finding time for curriculum content leaders to meet with their content area teachers. Because we have limited number of in-service days that we work with. And teachers by and large are pretty generous with their summer in terms of coming in and do the work. But, um, we're very cautious when we ask just to do that because.
Sure.
Yeah, I think that's what the coach idea can be helpful. Um, and it, it's not as like permanent thing, but just sometimes having someone that can do the labor work and, and get, gather information and then present it, more efficient use of everybody's time.
And though we're coming up on budget time, and so, uh, I, I think if there's something that could be done to help facilitate that work, that we should put it in our, our budgets. Because it's critical that all these things happen.
I think another point, just to piggyback off, is, you know, the, a lot, a lot of our teachers, they, another option for them is to, uh, get a release day with a sub. And I know.
Yeah.
That a lot of the teachers, uh, as much as they like to meet, don't like to not meet with their classes. And so that's that tension of, well, there's time, but there really isn't time. So your point's well taken.
Okay, good. Any other questions? Science, NCAP related? Great, thank you.
We really appreciate you asking us to come do it. It's nice to reflect on the work that we've done. Actually feel like we should leave you to this now. Um, but I also want to make sure that you're aware of, I think, the work that your, your staff are doing.
Good work.
Yeah.
Yeah, that car will be cold.
Yeah.
Bye, Kelly.
Bye.
Good night.
Next, we have the motorcycle class, safety class renewal decision. Is there something Superintendent De Nova that you can, you can?
I can, I can. Uh, you had this information?
Yep. I was just gonna say, if you could just take us a quick background, because we've had this before, and, uh,
Right.
It is a decision point for us this evening.
It is a decision point, and I'm hoping that I have the background. Um.
No, it's in our org notes.
It's in yours. All right. So you had.
We delayed our decision last time because it wasn't warned.
Right, but you had all the background information. You had one community member come in.
Right.
I think it was your October, maybe? No, September or August.
It was August.
It was August.
Yeah.
Um, and you, um, requested a certain amount of information that was provided to you last or you were ready to make a decision. Um, but we didn't have it warned as a decision item.
As a decision, right.
So that's why it is, um, on your agenda this month.
Right, right. So, anybody have any, any questions on that? Any, any memory refreshes that need to, to go on here? Cause, uh, the, the topic before us is, is that the, uh, the safety course had made an application for a facility use to this board. We had comments back for, from the public, uh, recommending that we, we don't accept the facility use permit. And that's what wasn't previously warned, and it's been warned now. So hearing no further questions or comments, do we have a motion to, uh, uh, deny the facility use permit for the motorcycle safety course?
Can I just interrupt? Um, if I remember that the community member's recommendation, it wasn't just specifically to not, uh, agree with it, but either not agree with it or move it, right? And that we decided that there is no other feasible place to move it to.
That's correct.
We don't run it.
Not here.
Right. No, but I mean, there was no other place on our premises to move it to.
No.
So, so I'm just saying for clarification, it wasn't just that the community member didn't want us to deny it. She's, the request, as I understand, it was either deny it or could you move it to another location on the premises away from, from the community that was being disturbed? Is that correct?
That's correct. And when it was, uh, evaluated, the only place that would be suitable would be its location in the front parking lot.
Right, okay, right.
Right.
I was just curious, did you, did you get any other public feedback at all on either side after that? Okay.
No.
No. No.
I'll, I'll make that motion.
All right. So we have a motion from, um, Brian for, uh, recommending disa- I don't know what the right language is here, to disapprove the facility use permit from the case of motorcycle safety.
To not renew?
To not renew.
Or?
To not renew.
Okay.
The request.
Okay, so we have a second by Aaron. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So the motion passes six zero, not to renew the motorcycle safety course facility use permit. Uh, next, our principals' reports. I see we have one principal here right now.
Ready to roll.
Okay.
So, a couple of things. First, I'd like to, uh, pass this document around, and it's basic, it, all it is is, one is a kind of a certificate that we received from the Agency of Education for our continued work in the League of Innovative Schools. And a sign-off sheet, which I've signed off on, and we need the superintendent sign and date, and the school board chair sign and date to continue approving our work with the League of Innovative Schools and the Secondary School Consortium. So I'll just pass this around, and Jack, when it gets to you, you can, uh, you can sign it, please.
Okay.
Um, a couple of things, we, I, I mentioned earlier with the, uh, grading system, the proficiency-based learning and reporting session we had at ADL on Saturday, December seventh, as I mentioned, that was the first, uh, of many more to come. The feedback from participants was even though it was a Saturday and people traveled, uh, from Hartford, Springfield and other points south and north, that felt that subsequent meetings were going to be necessary to share and expedite the process moving forward. Uh, Grand Isle High School Fair, Michelle Rath and I went, uh, up there to Grand Isle School Tuesday, December tenth. It was a similar situation with about twenty high schools and private schools in attendance with students and parents. I guess the one thing that was noticeably different this year was the number of students and parents in sixth, students, not the parents, in sixth and seventh grade, not just eighth graders. So parents are looking to shop and get information earlier, which was just interesting. We had a good turnout in our section of the school cafeteria, and we'll know more with upcoming registration in regards to the number of students that will join us.
A, a quick question on that, Rob. Uh, were you able to gather any intelligence, say, from other, other high school districts about, about their, uh, sending buses up to Grand Isle to transport students to their, uh, districts, similar to what we're doing here?
So, yes, South Burlington, Colchester, and us, we, we send a bus. Uh, South Burlington also includes Wi-Fi on their bus. Uh, they are giving, I believe they're providing laptops to students that go to South Burlington. Milton this year for the first time is running a bus, and BFA St. Albans is running a bus this year for the first time to Island students. So those are the different nuances of other schools that, uh, attend. So, good question. Um, oh, so in terms of safety, security update, I wanted to mention to the board that, um, I attend the Essex Safety Community Committee that meets once a month. Our next meeting is tomorrow. I'm sure we'll have a, an opportunity to converse and debrief the Colorado situation which occurred last Friday, the shooting that occurred there. In terms of immediate updates, because I know, Al, you asked this in the, uh, in an earlier session of the meeting tonight. I met with Chief LaRose and Detective Murdy at the beginning of the school year with Bill LeWehr, and I brought Bob into the conversation. So what we're looking to do, starting second semester, based upon other modifications in school safety that Essex Town is un- is undertaking this year and Colchester, um, schools, based upon our situation, what we feel is the next prudent step, also considering the report that was done not too long ago with, uh, Ken Trump out of Cleveland, is looking to establish, once the school day starts at eight o'clock, a presence right in the main office lobby as anyone walks in, as a, one of our security people, as a check-in person in terms of having anyone who comes in who is not a staff member or a student to sign in at that point. Have all visitors' passes or stickers administered there, not in the main office, because that assumes that one would go in the main office. Similar situ- situation would occur in the back, in the main entrance to where CTE is, so that would go at the same time. At the beginning of this year, we've locked during the school day, the guidance lobby door. That used to be open in the morning. It no longer is. And also the, uh, side door during lunchtime. We also now have a, uh, security person stationed between eleven and one, more or less, when the lunches are held. So that if students want to enter from the rink, vice versa, they can, they don't have to walk all the way around, but there's someone checking them in. Now, the additional thing we're going to do, hence the second semester, which would be barring those snow days during exam week, Judy. Sorry? Uh, January twenty-second is when the second, first day of second semester starts. We need to do some communication to the parents, the community members, obviously the students, because for students that have late arrival, for example, uh, we would want them, as they come in the lobby, to, you know, produce their ID as, you know, for the security, uh, individual. I, I've traveled to South Burlington many times for Chitney County Principals' Meeting, and I've been very impressed with their setup as they enter, as you would enter. Their one main entrance. I know they have a concern, their other entrance is the community library entrance, which goes right, they have a concern there. But I, I love the way that the gentleman that's there, he does a great job, he's the first impression, he's very personable, he knows what's going on, and you're right there. And every action and movement is monitored. So that is, that is one change we're making, starting second semester. The other thing, working with, with Bob and Bill, is I really believe, given the way things are these days, that we want to look into a, uh, anonymous, and I've mentioned this before, an anonymous tip hotline, texting hotline, not a call, not a phone call. UVM has done it, there've been a few schools in Massachusetts, we've, we've compared two companies, I think we're, we're set for tip four-one-one, which is the same company that UVM uses. The big difference that I can see is the support the school or the institution gets once it's up and running, as compared to the other company in play. So, once again, there needs to be some, I, I, I need to learn from other high schools what their rollout plan has been. But I don't want to wait till next fall. I'd like to start that as well, second semester, which would include CTE in the whole conversation as well. So in terms of safety, safety, security, those are the two updates that I have forthcoming as proactive measures based upon the previous report that the board did. National trends, meeting with our local police, seeing what our local schools have done, i.e. Essex Town and Colchester, and having a reasonable response as we move forward. And I think one of the things, I don't want to speak for Bob, but because of the nature of CTE, that you want people coming into your building as patrons. And I, I think having someone sit and buzz everyone that comes in, I guess if I'm told to do that, I'll be happy to do it. But I just don't, personally, I don't think we're in that place yet, because I see that to be a very, I, I don't know, I just see that to be not practical. That's my comment there. But I do think that would tighten up what we currently have by putting a person at each entrance and checking people in.
Well, just on that point, I, I know.
Sure.
And Bob's not here to talk about CTE, but, but some of those user functions where we want to invite the people isn't just necessarily here. So for like, for example, the dental technology, cosmetology is over in the hockey rink building, not here.
Yep.
So that's, that's something that we'd have to consider if we wanted to open the, um, but you had mentioned, Rob, about, and I fully support your initiative here on, on alert four-one-one or whatever.
Yeah, the tip line, text.
The, the text.
Yep. Yes.
Uh, uh, just, what are, what are the, would it be contained in a budget that you have some control over? You're, you're not, you know, it's not, it's not obviously something that we put in the budget for this fiscal year.
Well, you, in a sense, you kind of did. You were, you were kind enough to allow me some discretionary money.
We did. Yeah, yes, we did. Okay, so, gotcha, you're right.
And I see this as a real outstanding use, and this would be a two-year contract.
Okay.
With the text tip line. So I, I do have the money, thanks to you.
No, so good. I, and, and that answered my question. If, if it's the principal's discretionary fund to use it, and it's, it's certainly within your purview to use it that way, that's great. If it is something that we would want to consider as a budget line item as we go through budget development upcoming.
Yep.
You know, please include it at that point, you know, so we don't have to hit that up. I think this board would be interested in.
But I'd be, I'd be open to feedback from the board based on that, and, you know, the balancing between locking everything and buzzing people in. I, I personally, I, I would move, I would recommend that we move at least what we're doing.
Behind you, you can secure the building behind you, then that's probably a good thing to do. I was just gonna mention, Essex Town just enhanced their entire system. What they did is there is a controlled access badge. Uh, all the perimeter doors now are on controlled access. So every employee can only gain access within their working hours and no other hours. If the badge has happened to have been stolen or lost, someone tries to gain entrance to the school, it indicated, it's a security alert. And it's traceability. Um, so they've gone to a completely new system for all of their schools. There's a, uh, a number of employees got shocked when they found out.
Well, if I could just piggyback on that, um, the Prudential Committee heard from a concerned parent and parents um, at their last two meetings, um, with concern about access control. And even though all of their, um, uh, perimeter doors are locked, their main entrances still remain unlocked during the day. And the request is for that to be locked, for their main entrances to be locked. So they, um, had Chief LaRose, the state police, Detective Stephen Otis, um, and we used Visbit to do a security assessment of all four, actually in Westford as well. we used Visbit to do a security assessment of all four, actually in Westford as well, with respect to access control. So, they'll be making those decisions in their upcoming meetings, but it's a big conversation now. Interesting to the conversation you were having earlier during the visioning work around how do we have our schools be welcoming and inviting, and, and the tension that sometimes occurs when you're trying to also look at ensuring they're safe and secure. So, that's a conversation in the commu- community that I think it's important that you're aware of. I, I shared what the high school is doing, because you have human resource through your security and your work with rearranging your schedules. So, the K system is also looking at what they can do. Also, there's a new film, a three-M film, that's been created, which it isn't bulletproof, that you put it on glass, but that it shat-
When you said film, I was thinking movie.
Yeah.
Yes, a, an applique.
An applique.
Right.
So, that if a bullet does hit the glass, it keeps the structure, just like when your windshield gets hit by a rock. It doesn't go off and go through. And some of the upgrades that they're talking about as far as glass and entryways. So, it's a very big conversation, and, and the recent tragedies that continue to happen, even though the data shows that our schools are safer now in the past twenty years than before, but there's still, the events that occur are, one, a loss of one child is too many. So, it becomes a, a challenge for us to think about how we stay welcoming and at the same time secure.
Just, would like the board to know that, that the Safety Committee, they, you know, we meet once a month, and, and I give Chief LaRose and Chief Nato prior, Chief LaRose a lot of credit, because it's a, it's a wonderful committee that meets with school personnel, police, rescue, fire, nurses, mental health professionals. It's, it's a pretty impressive committee, and there is a wealth of sharing and information that goes on, and it's a rich conversation. And I know, and I'm certainly not the only principal that has tapped on Chief LaRose, but there are opportunities for regular conversations, and when we do, when we do drills, they like to be part of the drills. As a matter of fact, a gentleman from IBM who observed our Secure the School drill last year is going to come back in January again, because we are the biggest entity that they can replicate, and they found by watching our drill that they learned a few things in terms of what they could be implementing over at IBM. So, it's, and, and vice versa. And I look to go to different schools to observe their drills. So, it's, it's, it's a very good committee, and I think it was proven at the community meeting in February nineteen-
Yes.
-that it was a best-kept secret in Essex for a lot of people. You know, when people learned of what was going on there, I think that helps to reassure folks that this is definitely on the front burner of everybody's agenda, and nobody knew about it, so it was like, well, we didn't know you were doing that. So, it, it's a real good, it's a, and Bill Lware, his position is, is very much valued.
Yeah. Thanks for adding to that. The other point I'd make is that Chief LaRose attended our last educational leadership team as well.
Yes.
And although the police will always recommend locking front doors, they also will acknowledge that it's relationship, relationship, relationship that keeps us safe. The fact that we have the proximity, and Essex Police Department allocates two full-time police officers to our schools in Essex Town. So, it's a resource within our community that we appreciate and value. They go out of their way to continuously support our, our schools, and it's just important that you know that relationship is strong.
So, in terms of my report, that, I wanted to wrap that up, the safety, security piece.
I actually read it with a mentor in Montpelier at their elementary school, and this is just anecdotal, but they just installed a, basically a buzzer system where you press a button, and it's got a camera on it, and you say why you're there, and they let you in. And it's not too cumbersome, but it's a much smaller space. Certainly, it's a, I mean, it's a tiny school compared to the people we're dealing with.
That's why our neighborhood schools would be better suited-
Yeah.
-where we don't have that level of staffing.
Right.
And it's not foolproof. I think there's a false sense of security one can have with those types of systems, but Visbit and the police and the State Police all say that it slows, it slows the person trying to get in, and it gives them added time to get, the police added time, first responders to get to the school. So, I think it's really important that people are clear, though, that if somebody wants in, we've repeatedly seen they will find a way in, and that ninety-five percent of the shootings that have occurred have occurred from either people, from people already inside the school. So, as was the latest case.
And we know in past situations here, when there have been, as some of you remember, when we've had some weapons situations, we've been tipped off by students, hence they move towards a text, anonymous text line, because the phone is somewhat obsolete.
Yeah, I thi- I think that's brilliant. Yeah.
And the culture has changed. I think our students-
Well, they're right on top of it.
And it's, you know, third grade up, we're hearing.
I think the texting is so natural, it's-
Yep.
So, January twenty-second, that's what we plan on.
Okay.
Principal Travers stepped out, but he'll be back, so if you want to continue on.
All right, so we'll, we'll move on. Certainly, even if he gets back and we've gone on into other items, his, his principal's report's included in our org notes, so, so we'll just move on here. Next is our reports from our, our task teams, which include the communications, policy, negotiations, leader at work. I'm also just going to include the CCSU board update as part of that also at the same time, and maybe that's, I'll do a little flip-flopping on what's, on the agenda here. The CCSU board update actually kind of dovetails back on something we'll hear from communications, but there's, embedded in the org notes is a link to what, where the meeting minutes are, and you, for those of us who are online or who can be, you can click the meeting minutes and see what's going on. Just two initiatives I'd like this board to know about, about what's going on on, on the CCSU board. Initiative one, it's where we are, we've gone through our budget development for CCSU. You might recall that the, one of the big impacts that we're seeing to our district and the other districts in CCSU is Act one fifty-three, and what that will mean for us as we see our budgets being developed is our transfer of our resources out of our district into the CCSU for special educators-
Educational services.
Educational services that are being applied at the, at the, at the supervisory union level, not provided at our district. So, that's one big change that we will see. And again, the details are included in the meeting minutes, but just make it for your attention. The other, the other CCSU initiative I'd like this board to be aware of is where we are with our superintendent search process. That process is being, we have a facilitator, Dr. Brian Oregan, who is a, has a day job over at, in the depart, in the educational administration area at St. Michael's College, but also is a former superintendent at, in Chittney South, I believe, right?
Correct.
Is helping to facilitate our superintendent search process. We have formed a superintendent action committee is what it's called, the SAC, that's comprised of ten members, three members each from the administration, community, and parents, and faculty. So, there's nine members there, and we have one student member from Essex High School who serves on that committee. And, and that committee will be, again, working with Brian, starting in January, I want to say the first week in January is when they have their first meeting. And what they're, and what they're doing is looking at, at the pool of applicants who have applied for the superintendent position, and, and it's this committee that will be making recommendations back to the CCSU board for candidates for final consideration. So, there's that body of work that's going to be going on in January and February where this, I, I'd say this cohort of administrators, faculty members, parents, and a student will be doing their work, and then it comes to the CCSU board for action beyond that point with, with the finalists, so to speak. So, any questions about CCSU board? Again, take a look at the link that's in the org notes here, and you'll get more details, okay? Communications? Gary, can, I don't know if you want to say any?
Yeah, well, I think we, as I recall, spent almost all the time talking about the website, just kind of streamlining it more in terms of where to put certain issues, make it more friendly, focus a lot more on training, was kind of the theme, special board training, member training, things, access to different kinds of trainings around that, that a little better members can go to. We're trying to remove redundancy for a lot of redundancy where it is needed, so that makes it ease of use for people who want to just, looking to make, make it more transparent, I guess, for what we are doing, make it quite easier for us as well. I think there's like, for example, something I'll use a lot is the calendar of meetings, because I have a problem with that. And so, you know, but you can go right there, it's going to tell you what meetings, what times, and those kind of things. I don't know, Al, Jethro, if I'm missing anything. That's kind of the base of it.
That's good. No, that's fine. Thank you, Gary. Any, any questions on communications?
Well, they also have a list of acronyms, which I'm going to print out, but that's awesome, because I already heard some tonight. I'll have to check it out. So, you need your acronyms, go there too. Okay.
Thank you. Al, you want to talk about leaders at work?
Oh, it was a good meeting. It was probably the highlight of my week.
Wow.
Basically, the, the leaders at work and the new supervisory model for the superintendent is a major shift from previous evaluation models. It basically, just to review for a second, consists of five basic competencies or criteria, and within each of the five, there are five performance evaluation figures. Where we are at right now is that Judy has come up with a annual work plan. That plan was not, I, I, I don't think it was fully vetted or approved by the CCSU board, although bits and pieces of it may have been. We're at the point where we're putting parts of that plan and finding the places within the evaluation model where they apply, such that outcomes and performance outcomes can be identified. That identification process will occur over the months of March, April, and May. And so, it's a, a fair and balanced approach. The, one of the areas that we did touch on that is major difference is focused initiatives. Pretend that we'll have specific focused initiatives to be defined somewhere along this process. In any case, one of the thoughts about some critical body of work that needs to happen here at the CCSU level is the merging of the board's initiatives at the superintendent level as to where the focused initiatives would be. So, that being said, we've basically identified the major categories that need to be filled in, and then we're going forward from there. Any other thoughts? It was a, it was a long, but a very complete thorough discussion, and we're moving on towards a substantially more effective approach to evaluating performance at the superintendent level. Did I miss anything, Judy?
No. Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Judy, you were there.
I am, I am pleased that we were able to modify the timeline that Al spoke about, that we identified focus areas, and I think that's going to be valuable. I'll provide evidence of outcomes for those areas of focus, and I think it'll be informative for this year and for, and for next year as well-
Right.
-as far as moving forward with the district polls.
Right. Priority setting was one of those other areas that we touched on as well, but I think the, the major, one of the other major things was that the schedule is so crunched up-
Yeah.
-in the December, January, February timeframe, that we've lost some time from the summer that, where things had to have been done, and for just a number of reading reasons, you know, Mike leaving, it just couldn't be done on a timely basis. Now that we're, we're at this crunch time, we're trying to get this schedule back on track.
Back on track, yeah.
And then it becomes an eighteen-month cycle for all of the steps that have to occur. So, that's really a major piece of work to know, how do we resequence this, make it fair for Judy's appraisal, recognizing that we can't do everything within a shorter timeframe, but come up with a fair proposal, but still retains the integrity of the eighteen-month schedule, such that after the superintendent's selection process, that that person is still on board and on track with that appraisal system. So, it was a healthy piece of work.
Thank you, Al. Judy, anything else?
Yeah.
I just, I just want to clarify one point, that previous years, Leaders at Work had taken upon itself two initiatives to really look at. Board member training, new, new board member training, but it morphed into board member training and superintendent evaluation. The board member training is now only an initiative. It's in communications, and, and Leaders at Work is, is staying with the superintendent evaluation process.
Right.
Yep, okay. Thank you. Policy? Brian?
We're scheduled to meet, really for, since a while, tomorrow, so we'll be continuing to work on the wellness policy.
You knew that wellness was at the forefront of?
Yeah. We had been, our schedule had been interrupted to make space for a negotiations meeting, so that's why we're a little off schedule, but we'll be taking up the wellness policy.
Which does bring us to our last but not least, negotiations.
So, we're scheduled to meet tomorrow.
Wednesday.
Wednes- Wednesday. Excuse, excuse me. Yeah, that's when our board-
We're both meeting at the same time.
-our policy meeting is. So, sadly, Al missed the policy meeting to go to the negotiations meeting.
I just find that out now.
They seem to have an affinity for each other, and schedule themselves on the same date. And so, we had our first meeting with the association at our last meeting, and this is a working meeting?
This is?
With just our board, our council, right?
Just the negotiations council. Electronically, proposals have been exchanged.
Exchanged, yeah. And so, we'll be working through the similarities and differences, I imagine, at our next meeting. But it, it seems good so far. I mean, it's my perspective on, you know.
And there's a small group that is working with the teachers now, and we've met, and we've gone through the entire proposal. So- So that was a healthy meeting as well. So they've seen the whole proposal.
Yeah.
So we'll talk about that on Wednesday.
Yep, okay. Good. Anything else on, from any of our committees, administration? Have we missed anything that you feel the board should know in what's happening in our?
No, just that that small group is working on language, because there were so many language changes in the unified agreement. So there's not any negotiations that's happening at that level. It's solely for clarity of language. Where did some of the language come from? Any questions for clarity? So it's Deb Robbins, myself, Chris Leopold, and Paula Byrne. And there were four teachers from the association. It was very productive. Good meeting.
Good. Thank you. I do have one bit of CCSU news to share with this board, in case you haven't heard it already. But Charlie Day, who was chairman of the Prudential Committee, has had to resign her position as, on the Prudential Committee, because she has relocated out from Essex Junction into Essex Town. And since she doesn't live in the jurisdiction anymore, she's had to relinquish her seat. Michael Smith will be taking over as chairman of the Prudential Committee. I have reminded Charlie that Essex Town is part of U46, and that she would be a welcome member if we ever needed to have an additional Essex Town member here. But, and so Michael Smith is coming up and will be chairman of Prudential Committee, and I forget who the gentleman is who is taking the seat.
Matthew Mailey, who is father of a Summit Street School student, and is a partner with Mary Jane Shelley with Appreciative Inquiry. So there'll be, we're really looking forward to the talents that he'll bring. He has a PhD in education, and will be a valuable resource to that board. Also, this is the year in April, where, when the SU Board, um...
The rotating chairmanship, is that what you're going to go for?
That's right.
Yep.
And so that means the Prudential Committee Chair will be Chair of the SU Board this year as well. So just in case you don't think there's enough going on. That new board member orientation was very timely.
All right. Thank you. I see our Director for Center Technology Essex is back with us. I hope it was a successful evening for you tonight?
It's still happening.
Oh, it's still happening?
Fulfill my duties. Thanks for the opportunity.
No, so Bob, we've kind of split. We've heard the EHS reports now. We went on to other things that I have, the board is aware that your report was included in our org notes, so if there are things that you want to make us aware of?
I'll just go through a few things very quickly.
Certainly.
Under progress made over the past month on action plan steps, in the area of student achievement, we were, CTE was named among four career and tech ed centers that were selected for the Vermont STEM Equity Pipeline Project. It's a national, nationally recognized program that's offered in partnership with NAP, which is the National Alliance for Partnership and Equity. We have been selected with three other schools to go through a series of trainings that will lead to an action plan to improve the things that we do to both attract and keep young female students in STEM-related programs. We had our first training last week. The next one is in February. Part of the project is, the NAP organization provides the sending schools with a dashboard of data around student involvement and outcomes. We get to look at our data and the other three schools' data. We use that in order to plan our, our action research project. And in, let's see, in April, we have been invited to the annual NAP conference, and CTE has been asked to make a presentation on the work we've been doing with our multi-step process around gender equity. So we, you know, you've heard, we've developed a gender equity graduate-level course for our faculty. Two-thirds of our faculty have already completed that. We'll continue that going forward. We've done the Girls Can Two program, and they're interested in how we're using Appreciative Inquiry to pull all those together through advisory groups. So all of the initiatives we've been working on, they're asking that we make a presentation at the national conference. We'll get together this week to talk with Kathy Johnson from Vermont Works for Women to help us with that presentation. It was good news. Under the area of, this is the only other thing I'll bring up, under the area of something I'd like the board to know. We undertook a three-year project called the Adult Career Path Alliance, headed up by Robin Lane, the Skill Tech Director. She is working with, with industry representatives from the four priority sectors that were named by Governor Shumlin to study what it is exactly they think they need in an adult workforce that they're not getting from career and tech education. We're using the newly published Common Core for Career and Technical Centers to start the conversation. The outcome will be, hopefully, a new approach to training at Skill Tech in those priority sectors that will lead to certificates. Very interested in talking with the Agency of Education around a bridge year for newly graduated seniors who don't have opportunities at post-secondary and feel like they don't quite have the training that they need for, to go into industry. It's an industry, it's an interesting crossover project for us, because I think it will help inform our daytime programming and possibly lead to other programs for high school-age students. Those are the two things I want to identify.
Explore.
Yep. As we start to think outside of the box, that is, that is a group of kids left behind, I think. They meet the requirements for graduation, but they just don't have that next step to economic independence.
Three-year with an internship would be interesting.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Bob. Any questions for our director? Okay. Let's move on then to consent agenda. We have our warrants that have been making their way around approval of the meeting minutes, which are included in the org's, a letter of resignation. We also have, in addition, a recommendation for hire for the, you know, we've approved of resignations created a void, and now we have a recommendation for hire that's to be included in the consent agenda this evening. Is there anything that we would like to pull from the consent agenda? Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Absolutely.
Moved by Ryan. Do I have a second? I'll second it. So all in favor to approve the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So the motion passed for the consent agenda, six to zero. One quick thing before we talk about the calendar, or the agenda items that should be calendered for future board consideration. Al has, Al came across some information from a trip he made to upstate New York the week of Thanksgiving about a private school, the Allendale... Anyway, Annandale.
Which is a private school. Tuition and the $20,000 to $30,000 a year for students K through 12. It was, it was a day-long experience, but it was one in which the board, the board may want to think about not only board member orientation, but parent orientation in a different light. And it really reflects the commitment of the school and what it will do, and its commitment to its learning philosophies for every child. So there is a personal contact. In fact, every child will be known and challenged. Every, I mean, it's, it's pretty amazing. And these are not small classes. These are 25 students per class, the ones that I saw. Some of the exam performances were pretty high, comparable to, some of them, I think Jack was saying, comparable to what we have here. But these are independent-thinking, well-rounded students that are coming out of this. So they're, the things that we're trying to do in Common Core, a lot of that they know and they're doing, but it's that whole parent commitment philosophy, and what the school stands for, and the, and the mission of the school and its commitment to its, to their parents, to the students' parents. It's, I'm sure they're trying to sell their school, but they're living it as well. Now, this is not, it'll take me a little while, I've got four copies. You can read through it. I'll make a separate copy for Jack. These weren't correlated together, correlated together, so I need to take a few minutes to try to correlate these. But the information in here, responsive community, the school has an expectation of a responsive community at all levels. Known and challenged, every child will be completely known and understood by all teachers, and all teachers are committed to every student. Some of the AP, all AP scores, AP students scoring three or higher, 95%. Explore a different school of thought. Independent thinking, leadership, integrity, it all starts here. I mean, one of the things that happened, just to share with you what happened, the local PBS station invited students in the greater Rochester area, and I don't know how many schools there are, how big the population is in Rochester, but it's pretty big. Students were to write a letter regarding, nominating their teacher for why they should be recognized as the best teacher, you know, what the qualities were. And the, the ABC, CBS, NBC, and PBS affiliates came in. Out of the entire Rochester community, Annandale, one of the Annandale teachers won. And they had a big television conference there. They made the announcement in the cafeteria at lunchtime, brought all the cameras in. And what they did was, they made the announcement, teacher almost collapsed. But it was an unbelievable experience for the teacher and the kids, because the kids immediately, you know, group hug of the teacher. And it was, it was just an unbelievable scene. So I just wanted to share that with you, that not only do they have some really sound thought processes about how they're operating in the school, but they're also looking for worries of reinforcing and rewarding and providing recognition for staff, you know, and that may be something for us to think about as well. So I need to correlate this, because I want everyone to be able...
You'll distribute that out?
Yeah, I'll distribute it out. And, but, just an unbelievable experience. Just wanted to share with you.
Thank you.
Yep.
So Superintendent, just let me know, go back on our consent agenda, which we've approved. We've approved a recommendation for hire, singular, and now there's, it's plural, right? So maybe?
Yes, so I apologize to board for not supporting you well through this. It was a training misstep. Typically, when these come to me, they're, you've all received them, so I thought that you had received both of these. So if you have handed out background now for the first appointment, which is the replacement for Diane Dwyer, who you just accepted that resignation, and the candidate's name is Sean Thoret. And the information you have here informs you that he'll be the math integration specialist teacher at CTE, and he'll begin on January 2nd. So that's your first, and it's a .56, 6.4 position. So that's a temporary, because it's after the June, after August. So that's a temporary contract. The second contract is also for Hillary Arthur, whose position is for phys ed slash health FTE at a .1875. This also is temporary, and it's for second semester as well for the Center for Technology Essex. So what I need, the minutes to reflect is that you approved teaching contract for both Sean and Hillary Arthur.
So, so right now, what we've approved is the one for Sean Thoreau?
Thoret.
Thoret. And what I, what I would like to see is a nomination and to accept the temporary appointment for Hillary Arthur as in the Physical Education Department at CTE. I'll make that motion second. Just further discussion. I have personal knowledge of Hillary and have complete trust and confidence that this is a good decision on behalf of CTE to hire, to hire Hillary, so. And she's currently working. So we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you for that.
Thank you. I'm sorry again, I apologize.
So I'll sign both of those contacts. Okay. Agenda items that should be calendered for future board meetings?
One.
Do you have one? Go ahead.
I was wondering if in the teacher evaluation revision, that it's under consideration, if some of the common core items, such as literacy, writing, rubics, so forth, should be a part of that evaluation?
So, the teacher evaluation revision has been on, has been delayed.
Oh, okay.
It's been delayed as a recommendation from the educational leadership team. We tried to move forward with that committee this year and feel that it's essential to have teachers on that committee. And because of the implementation of the Common Core... and the upcoming aspect of just, teachers just didn't find that they had the time available to study it this year. So we, we've temporarily put that committee on hiatus and will work next year toward moving that forward. But that's an excellent suggestion, Al.
At the same time, EHS, all teachers have a writing goal this year that they've submitted, which relates to the literacy that you heard earlier tonight. So I think this is step one. That'll be step two.
Yeah, I, I would think that if that's what it's going to take to move the entire process forward, that somehow it should be gradually implemented in the evaluation process. Just a thought.
I had a topic we, that we had discussed at the org notes meeting and it's something that I know this board is aware of because it came up in, in one of our last hearings. And that's the subject of signing off the handbook and understa-, you know, the, the policies that were, you know, understood. And, and we had report back from Principal Reardon about, you know, the efficacy of that and how far, and, you know. So I think this board would like to hear more, you know, more from administration on, on how, how that policy works, how it's done electronically, how it's done physically. How do we know that every student has been touched and knows and understands what's, what's in our policy handbook? I see a lot of bobbleheading, yes, that's an important topic and it's something that we would, that this board would like to hear about.
And when you talked about that, I sent out a notice to both your principals. And you spoke about it in terms like a spring, where you thought it would be more relevant to hear something more in the spring timeline?
Only, only because, as we know, January, we get into budget time and our energies will be, will be devoted into creating our, our budgets. But it, I don't want to lose sight that this was an important topic for this board and that we'd like to be able to come back and touch, touch back on that. I'm flexible on a date, but it has to be sometime this year.
Yep, okay.
Okay.
So that you could, so that you could...
Because it's, it's a beautiful folder and it, some of the colors don't really come out on the copies.
Jack, just to get back on the, the follow-up on the, on the handbook question.
Yes.
I think right now we'd like to just get some more information, right? So is that something we could get a little sooner? Because I think we were wanting to just find out, kind of, you know, what's the process right now? Kind of maybe who has affirmed that they've gotten it and who hasn't. And then maybe we could have some discussion about maybe what we could do going forward.
Going forward?
I don't know, it's just a thought that...
So, so you'd like to get some information as soon as possible?
I think it would be nice, yes.
That's what I hear you saying, okay, okay.
Yep, rather than waiting till we... Because maybe that would make it, we could all ponder on it a little bit, maybe try to come up with some ideas.
Would that be something you'd like included in principals' reports?
I think it might be good.
Okay, that's fine.
In the principals' reports.
Because then we kind of know what, you know, yeah.
Thank you.
And just so we're clear, this isn't just a EHS phenomenon, but how it's handled too at CTE, right? Okay. Okay, that's, I'm, I'm, I'm fine.
You know, if, if that's okay as long as it's...
Okay. Anything else for future board meetings? Then what I'd like to do is move into executive session for the purpose of a personnel matter at this point.